All right, everybody, welcome. This is the Select Board meeting on February 3rd, which will later turn into our Budget Public Hearing. We will open as we normally do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So that moves us on to roll call. Dave Hemingway, Tara Sledford.
Marlo Harris.
Norma DeGloa.
And as per usual, meeting rules and procedures during the normal meeting period. We like to run it classroom style, so please just don't cut each other off. Raise your hand. We will try to get to you and include you. And once we get to the public hearing, our moderator will be taking over. For announcements, do we have announcements for that?
I don't have any.
Okay. In that case...
The bomb here? Your conference room?
No, that'll come later.
That's later? Okay. I don't really want to be making this announcement, but it makes sense. And some of this may have a date that sounds a little weird because I wrote it a couple days ago and posted it online, so you may have seen it. As Webster's representative to the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, I feel it is my duty to directly inform you about today's new rates that you may not have even heard about yet, some reasons behind those rates, things you should now consider, and the future outlook. CPCNH granite basic rates were raised today on January 31st to 9.7 cents per kilowatt-hour, starting in March, which will be above all utility prices for the rest of that rate period, six months starting February. Webster Community Power was primarily launched to save Webster residents money and provide stable rates. Partnering with CPCNH has successfully provided highly competitive rates in the open market, where you now see lower and less variable prices across the board, but not lower rates than utilities for this February rate period. So how did the rates end up having to adjust higher in a situation that I certainly didn't expect? There were a few major reasons for this, resulting in CPCNH Board of Directors being called to an additional meeting today, and then that was January 31st, and acting upon the enterprise risk management policy, including setting new rates starting after a 30-day notice. Over the prior rate period through January, CPCNH was aggressive in rate savings for customers when setting rates that were expected to cover costs, yet well below utility prices. Unfortunately, with price changes in the energy market and some transactions not occurring as quickly as expected, CPCNH ended up significantly drying down their financial reserves during that time. That's why CPCNH has financial reserves that accrue on a normal basis and remains financially healthy despite that drawdown. But continually doing that would obviously not be sustainable, nor matching with the agreements that CPCNH has with you all to set rates to cover expected costs. As a result, processes have already been changed in modeling, forecasting, and procurement to prevent the same situation from happening in the future. So what is the current storm that's causing rates to be reset higher than utilities now? Well, I'll tell you a little bit more about two of those arch issues causing the current disparity, one of which is really new. The first reason for the current storm is what would have initially been made CPCNH a roughly matching rate between the utility prices at 8.9 cents per kilowatt, that you may have already seen and actually started, the list is tomorrow, but it would have been starting February 1st. In the prior rate period, utility companies also had more costs for retail power supply than they collected. But the New Hampshire PUC has told them to set that loss aside to be collected later with interest, likely in the next rate period rather than during this rate period. As already mentioned, CPCNH has made an agreement with all of you in the signed plans approved at town meeting that rates will cover costs and still would have resulted in close rates for this rate period while doing so. In the past, the utility supply cost overrun has actually hurt utility default residential customers as they collected their additional costs of serving commercial customers from their residential customers. To this point, there is bipartisan support for current bill to make sure that those cost shifts by utilities can't happen in the future, and all costs associated with a customer class will be paid for by that customer class. That is New Hampshire House Bill HB 760. And while I believe it looks likely to pass, please consider contacting the representatives at the State House to support it and prevent cost shifting to you. The second and new reason for the current storm is that CPCNH's Board of Directors believed an agreement had been reached with a local generation facility in New Hampshire to supply a large portion of its power, while agreeing to set the 8.9 cent per kilowatt-hour rate that started in February. Unfortunately, that deal didn't finalize. That meant CPCNH had to go buy power at more recent and higher rates for the coming rate period to recover from that loss of power supply, and is why you now see a higher rate being inquired to fully cover costs. CPCNH has been investigating the policies and procedures that were designed to prevent this sort of rate risk from occurring and what actions should prevent it in the future. Now that you know the largest factors for what happened and how we got here, what are your options? The first option is simply to stay with Webster Community Power and do nothing. While the rates are higher than utility prices for this six-month period, the difference is less than $10 per bill for an average electrical use household of approximately 650 kilowatt-hours per month. And utility rates will likely be higher to collect their additional costs from the last rate period during the next rate period. So over the long run, if you're just not changing and you don't want to pay attention to it, you likely still make out better. The second option is that you can opt out of Webster Community Power. If you do this, I believe the best timing will vary depending on utility. Ever source, you probably just get the small difference in rate by switching now until the next rate period. But please do your own due diligence in investigating that for your own situation. For Unitil, waiting until March is likely the best time to switch. When opting back to Unitil's default service, they appear to put you into their variable monthly rate at your next bill, not the six-month announced flat rate that many may have heard the pricing for. That Unitil variable rate is quite high in February, but then it comes down under the CPCNH rates in March through at least the most of rest of the six-month rate period. Again, do your own due diligence before deciding on your own path forward. If you do opt out, it is highly likely that you will want to opt back in to Webster Community Power for the next rate period, again to save on electric supply. Webster Community Power is very clear in our agreements to make sure that there would never be penalties for opting in or out, and that you could do so freely at any time. Webster Community Power will not be able to opt you in automatically, like was done on launch, once the rate savings exist again. So you will need to do this yourself, both for the opt-out now and the opt-in then. You can do all of that and all of the opt-in/out options that you decide are best for you on the www.communitypowernh.gov/Webster website, or by calling 1-866-603-7697, which is P-O-W-R for power. All right. Are there any other announcements?
I let stuff all the time.
All right, that moves us to appointments, which is department heads. Come on down.
Mr. Moderator, on the town meeting, the proportions you do by up and down here, is it still good? And then selling the house numbers, is that good with you? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
So, let's go for the financial report. So as of the last financial report on 1/31/25, Police Department has used $26,910.56 of our proposed 25 budget. For the month of January, we had from the 1st to the 31st, we had 27 motor vehicle stops, three summonses, with fines of $291. The offices handled 38 calls for service. Some of the calls listed are two civil matters, three department information received and disseminated, one motor vehicle complaint, one road hazard, one suspicious activity, two sex offender registrations, one suspicious person, one new vacant house check request. We have quite a few. One subpoena service, five assists to the fire and EMS, six assists to other agencies, three assists to citizens, snow obstruction reported, and a summons for suspension of a motor vehicle registration. I have two certified offices that are coming, one's coming on Wednesday for an interview and fill out an application, and one coming on Friday for the full-time position. So hopefully we'll have some half the good candidates picked on.
That's awesome to hear.
Especially with it all full-time certified.
Has anything occurred with the grant for getting an additional position?
It's supposed to come out, it's supposed to come out in January. We haven't seen it come out yet. Haven't come from DOJ. And then, who knows? It may be on hold right now.
At this point, no one ever knows.
Maybe it's...
Yes. Okay.
If it is on hold, it's all your fault.
All right.
It'll come back.
So on the highway part of it, we've had a little bit of snowed plow. Other than that, just keeping the buses upright.
That's a good idea.
Well, they call every morning at 3:30.
The day they want to know.
Well, there's a little bit, yeah, yeah. Are you ready? Is it safe? Yep.
We live in New Hampshire.
So the car that we got from the police department, Steve didn't tell me there was all that stuff wrong with it. I thought he was going to fix it out of his budget before he gave it to me, but it went down to Johnny Martins and heated up the brakes and got it all set. Needed a sensor in the gas tank.
Yeah, a sensor from the gas tank.
Sounds it. So Phil and I took it to Loudon on Friday to get the lights changed from blue to red and have the radio program. It's the guy down there that Phil and Steve has used forever, I guess. The tanker is at the firehouse, the new tanker. So we put 1,000 feet of four-inch hose on it new and got up into 300 feet of two and a half and 250 feet of inch and three-quarters. We're still waiting for a bunch of fittings and stuff to come in before we can really get it into service. It's full of water. It's registered, it's insured. And we've been doing some driving training with it, some of the guys. So it's well on the way. The guy was there today that Phil and Steve used to put the seals on the doors. On September 9th, the Central New Hampshire Forest Fire Wardens Association, we usually hold the annual meeting at the station, so they called to ask if it was okay if they came out on September 9th, if I'd host the meeting, but with your permission... Well, no, I was asked from prior board if we did other things there other than whatever to ask, and I just...
Yeah?
Oh, wow.
The front valve to the front suction on engine three isn't working. It's stuck open. So Wayne Perkins, Perkins Pump that does all our certifications once a year, he has the valve. He didn't want to do it last week because of the so-called, in case we needed the truck, and he's sending Andy out tomorrow to change that, so that will all be back in working order. The forestry truck had an antifreeze leak. I had a young man come in and take it all apart and up in behind the motor mount on the passenger side, freeze plug had rotted from the inside out, so we were losing all that. So we had that motor mount out. We changed all the freeze plugs on that side of the motor and replaced it with a new motor mount. So that thing's ready to go for spring. Capital Area Meeting last month, they're having a company, they picked a company to come in with all their towers and link them all back together, update the stuff. It's all 10 years old, and that's a million, um, $1,400,000. So they're getting some of that money from Opera and stuff to help with, to offset the cost for that. So that big project's going to be, was it, I think it was nine towers?
Four towers.
And so all that equipment will all be updated. And fire alarm was down, a dispatcher, and they just hired another female dispatcher, which seems like she's doing a real good job. So they're back up to full staff. So other than that, everyday business.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we, well, close Pinbridge, if that happens this year, who knows? But I mean, it's supposed to. Somebody asked me, do we plan on keeping a fire truck near Pillsbury Lake or something in case there's a problem down there?
No, no, we won't. Because a lot of times, it adds a little bit of time, but it's not a whole lot of time. And actually, a week ago today, Keith Gilbert, Capital Area C1, which is the chief of the 23 towns, he came in Emery, Captain Eaton and I, and actually Phil, Lieutenant Mitchell sat in on a lot of that. We upgraded all the alarms. We spent five hours from 8 o'clock, well after 1 o'clock that day, and upgraded everything to active shooting, to everything, up to a fifth alarm. The furthest truck on the fifth alarm's going to be coming out of Bristol.
Wow, wow.
So we...
So that's taken care of, basically.
We upgraded all that. City of Concord is automatic out of the manor with engine five and tanker one. And their tower now is on all automatic building fires out of the city with a crew of five.
Okay, that's good, because somebody asked me that, and I didn't know the answer. So I knew you'd know the answer, so that's good.
And then, so we got that all into place, and Phil was a big help on some of that with the active shooting stuff, and I'm glad that he sat in with us.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions or things to say about departments?
I'll go unless somebody has questions.
All right. Doesn't look like it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a couple things I'd like right now.
All right, yes. Anything that is appropriate for before the budget hearing? We'd be great to discuss that.
I know you're waiting for that. We have two proposals of donations to the town, and as part of the law, the board, if the gift is less valued than $5,000, the board can make a decision whether to accept it or not. The first is a donation of a monitor for the tax collector's office, and I know who donated it did, so I would ask you to...
Me too, because I read the minutes.
So I'm looking for the board to accept that donation.
We accept it. Is there any reason we shouldn't?
You have to make a motion.
Well, Marlo makes a motion to accept it.
Second by D.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Stan. The next is, the town clerk has been working to upgrade her office and to provide very good service to our residents, and is, has planned to have the counter in her office extended. She went out and got some quotes, and we had a proposal from Custom Woodworking of Brentwood, which does businesses, Edwards Mill Cabinetry, and that is run by residents Paul and Benjamin Faxon. They have given a proposal with a value of $4,800, which they would like to donate to the town to build this counter.
I would move to accept said donation and say thank you very much. We love it when our productive town residents are able to showcase their work for the town.
I think it's a very generous donation.
Thank you. Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Are we going to write them a nice thank you note?
I certainly hope so.
Okay.
I'll write it. You don't need to write one for me.
Is it mahogany, Mary? Is that what we got?
Yeah, cherry.
Okay, great. The other issue that I wanted to talk to you about, I know you are interested in the bond that is being discussed for the transfer station. As you recall, the bond is going to be in the amount of $4,015,000, of which Webster's share will be $1,3,750. I spoke with Neil in Hopkinton what the difference was between taking a 10-year bond and a 20-year bond, and the interest that we would save by taking a 10-year bond is $192,000, roughly The payments would average about $25,000 more per year to do that. I would like a consensus of the board, because Hopkinton is having their public hearing a week from today on this phone, and I need consensus of what the board feels. I know that one board member is really much, very much in favor of a 10-year loan, and maybe more than one. And I think that it may, I talked to Neil about a joint meeting, and I hate to make up the meetings for you, but a joint meeting between you and the Hopkinton Board. I do have a calling to Neil, and probably would make sense to do that before, to have it. I want to give him what your thoughts are before the bond hearing.
I think we can definitely give him our thoughts before then. I don't know if we can all meet before then.
Yeah, and I don't think you can either, but I'm just...
Can't we just give him our thoughts? And you can tell the thoughts?
Well, you know, and of course...
Because to me, to me, I think we, I think it's all thoughts.
This is a long take by the town of Hopkinton. So I think you certainly can give your views, but of course, the final, the final decision is not here.
So I'm very much in favor of the shorter bond period, and part of the reason to that is the details that I don't have in front of me right now of what the percentages are for the, sorry, not bond, loan, because it's a loan through DES, some of which would be forgiven.
Yeah.
Interest rate.
And the, but the interest rate percentage for the shorter period is very, very likely to always definitely stay below inflation, even if things are somewhat crashing in the future, whereas the longer period bond does not guarantee that. And so by doing it with the shorter period, it's almost like a completely free loan with no penalty, plus we get the, I think it's 10% that they forgive from NHDES.
Yeah, 10%, that's $400,000 forgiveness total.
Yeah, across both.
So didn't we talk about the fact that we would just take a bond out on our portion?
I don't know if you can do that.
Yeah, I believe we'd ask to have that looked in in case they went with the 20.
Right. Because that is a little more complicated from what I understand.
Or, or the other thing that I could, well, again, it's not a bond, it's the NHDES loan that they've already accrued.
Right, okay, okay. Whatever you want to do.
But the, the other part would have been to ask them, and Neil, I guess, in concert with NHDES, if the 25% that's ours could be taken out as a 10, as the shorter period loan instead of the longer period loan, which I believe were 10 and 20 years, the two?
Yeah.
So that the total would still be the same out of the same project, but the 10-year loan portion would just be Webster attributable, and the 20-year portion would just be Hopkinton attributable.
When I posed that question to Neil, he did not know, and so I hope to have a little more information as we close on. I will send you his amortization that he sent me.
What was your feeling? Just he was trying to get all the feeling of the board.
No, I think, I think the shorter is better for us.
Why? And if they...
Webster's done a lot to make sure it doesn't have debts, so...
Right. Well, and I feel like we'll pay our portion, but, but we'll pay our portion what we feel is the most responsible way of doing it. Not quite sure, and not, I guess, our business to why they want it longer to cost that much more money, but that's there.
They might have other stuff in their budget.
I think you're going to find that out at their budget hearing compared to ours.
Yeah. But anyhow, so I feel like to stand as strong and forward on that as possible.
Yeah.
You know, oh, it might not be as easy. Uh, okay, so let's figure it out.
Okay, well, that would be, and I don't mean to tell you this, but that's really a board function and not my function.
So why don't...
I just told you. No, I'm kidding.
I mean, and, you know, I'll do whatever I can.
So should we have a motion for this, and then maybe like officially try to send the correspondence, or?
That would be excellent.
Okay.
Please.
I would move that we, I would move that Dana write a letter to appropriately inform Hopkinton that we are still not in favor of the long loan period, and Webster is unanimous in shorter loan period being the most appropriate.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take your vote.
Look at that for timing. Grabbed that right up right at 7:00.
Anything else quickly before our budget hearing?
No, that was, that was what I needed to talk to you about. Thank you.
So with that, I will mention that normally if there were like a bond or a loan hearing, that would normally be town meeting. Since this is not Webster taking up said loan, that won't be ours, so you won't hear more about that tonight or at our town meeting. That will be at Hopkinton's town meeting, though we will certainly be talking about it and informing you of what happens in that realm. So before we...
And working hard to do what we just said.
So before we begin, it is now 7:00. Before we begin, I'll make mention that the school district budget hearing is tomorrow night at the high school. And we would encourage all of you to go there as well and know how your money is being used, since they are a much larger portion of our taxes than the Webster budget. But now on to our budget hearing, as noticed for 7:00 PM. We have traditionally done this as a full walkthrough of the warrant as well, and will continue to do so tonight. So while the Select Board has plenty to tell you about the budget, that may not be the first warrant article of discussion, and as this public hearing portion of the meeting will be run by our town moderator, it will be up to him and his rules. So I will open the public hearing at 7:00.
Thank you all for being here. You can hear me, okay? I don't need the podium. We've got to be as informal as possible, but also as necessary. All your, all your questions and stuff should go through me. You all know the rules of this, right? So y'all have the warrant in front of you? The first article is to elect, this is Tuesday, voting day, all right? The first two items. To choose all necessary town offices for... To choose all necessary town offices for the ensuing year. It, it's always been the history, when I've done these things or when I ran for office, that we would open up the first part of this for any candidates who might be here to say hello and introduce themselves. Um, and, uh, so I, I know Mr. Clark is here. Are there any other candidates for town office here tonight?
I believe Dee is here for trustee.
Yeah, trustee of trust funds.
Okay, well, uh, let's start with the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Clark, would you like to say a few words about, uh, your...
Thank you, Dee. We'd like to first say it's big, uh, big shoes to fill here.
Oh, thanks.
You and I have known each other for a number of years.
Yes, we have, sir.
I think since the first day I moved, came to Conca, this is police synopsis.
That's right, you're right.
We did, but congratulations.
Proud to have you in town, too.
Well, thank you. I've been here nearly thirty years. I'm John Clark, and I think everybody sitting in this audience knows me, so I'm not gonna dive into the weeds on who, what, where, when, and all that. You know, I've been, been around the town here, and, uh, my wife and I, Kelly, live up on the, well, ultimately in Babaluck here. I've been active in town affairs, and what made me do this, Americans say this, this was in last hours, but I was kinda second guessing whether I should put my name into this, because I've always kinda been on the short side. And what I mean by that is I sometimes think I can do things from behind the scenes, and I've been somewhat successful in that. If you heard me speak at town meetings and definitely supporting public safety and, and, Emmett and his team and, and many other things in town. I'm a big supporter of education. Uh, if I do get elected, uh, that would be one of my drives to keep an eye on that and, uh, and work with the current board members. I wanna see Webster continue on the same values that we're now seeing from this board and work forward from that point. Uh, we have a big thing coming up with this, uh, this dumb issue, money there, uh, but there's many other things that are going on. Very happy to hear what Steve reported tonight about getting candidates for the police department. Public safety's a big, big thing tonight. And, uh, the ninety-seven, ninety-eight investments, I don't know how many children we have across the road now, Steve, maybe you can tell me?
I think the ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven children, that's a big investment here in town. Those are our best assets, and very concerned about that school and keeping that school safe. Safety, keeping our tax dollars down, working with these two individuals, trying to do that, uh, and, and just moving forward in a very positive manner. It's nice to come to a meeting and see positivity, and that's the way I wanna go. And also the liabilities of the town, making sure we don't get caught up in court on something crazy. I've been in law enforcement fifty-two years, I recently retired from Ruger Farms Company, as corporate chief of security across the country. So, I think I can bring some things to the system, work with this team as we move forward. Again, big set of shoes to fill. Thank you, thanks, Stephen.
Thank you. Thank you for running.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few, you're running for something? Or you're just running away?
I'm running for trustee. Well, to be honest with you, I signed up many times before for trustees, and it ended up, I ended up being a selector or something, because there was no need for it, so, so maybe I'll be trying, maybe it'll end up this way, so. And I'm pretty frugal with money and all that stuff, so, um, hopefully I'll do a good job for the town, like we usually do. We're pretty frugal, so, and we get a lot done for what we spend, so, never complain about that.
I, I don't envision any questions for the candidates tonight, I mean, that's just introducing, uh, to you, I, no one else is here running, right?
Marty Bender is rerunning as library trustee, and Matt Cummings is running as a, continuing on as cemetery trustee. That's all positions we have open.
Okay.
Those four, yeah.
Voting is Tuesday, the eleventh of March, from ten till closing. We have those four unopposed, and we have this, uh, article, uh, from the zoning ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, uh, I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you, um, I think you can read it. It, there's a lot of stuff that, that, um, it's not confusing, but it's long, so I'm going to read what I was given earlier, uh, which is really the nuts and bolts of what this means. The planning board proposes amending the impact fee ordinance to reflect the structures destroyed by fire or natural disaster must be rebuilt within three years in order to avoid the imposition of impact fees. Uh, so that's what this change is all about. Even if you're building on the same impact, the same site, the same size, there's a three-year window, right?
So, the reason for it was the town was in an expensive lawsuit, because somebody had a house that was destroyed seven-plus years ago with a fire. They bought the lot as a vacant lot, and then built in a different section of the property and didn't wanna pay an impact fee. So, we ended up having to go to courts. We wanted to sort of shore up the ordinance so that it wouldn't happen again, and it wouldn't charge the town money.
Thank you. Any questions? That's Tuesday, right? Yeah. It's gonna be a long day.
March one. Yeah, not next Tuesday.
Not next Tuesday.
He's saying Tuesday, I'm like, I think we're only in February.
Okay, so now we're into, uh, number three. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of one million nine hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Majority vote is required. Would you like to address your budget?
Yes. So, while this warrant article is about the budget, I'll give a quick overview for you to put everything else into context as well. The overall ask is up two-point-six percent this year from last year. This is from a six percent increase in the operating budget and an eight percent decrease in the request towards funds. While we don't normally talk about revenues much, unless the highway block grant funding and the meals and rooms tax contributions from the state go down, we have also expected an increase in projected revenues as well. Taxes end up being the total used minus the revenues, adding exceptions such as elderly, disabled, and veteran credits, and then dividing by the value of property. So, we hope to come out very similar in the municipal portion of the tax rate this year compared to last year. I'm going to start by talking about the town's biggest expense every year, but particularly this past year, thanks to the early year storms, roads. We've all heard the complaints about each of our favorite roads not getting the attention that we might hope for, but that doesn't mean that our road agent isn't busy and isn't doing a good job for us. In fact, we have one of the better-conditioned town road systems in New Hampshire. To put it into perspective, though, our town has traditionally run around a two-point-five million dollar total raise each year, and last year we spent almost eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand on roads from the budgets and trust funds. That's a little over a third, and not including bridge engineering work, or stuff towards the sand, new sand and salt shed. This year should conclude our reorganization of how roadwork is funded. In order to make everything as easy to see as possible, normal roadwork and preservation is now all in the operating budget. The Road Preservation Fund is used for preservation projects that are known and saved for, such as expecting roughly a hundred thousand dollars for chip seal in two years, which is why you'll see fifty thousand put into it now. The Highways and Roads Capital Reserve Fund is for reconstruction projects, with some examples for upcoming years being Lake Road, Detour Road, and portions of Little Hill Road. That fund may only be used for projects that are in the capital improvement plan. As many of you are aware, we spent a lot on roads last year, including from the unexpected rebuilds of flooding. We were able to do that without making use of the Highway Expendable Trust Fund, which is designed to handle unexpected overages, but we continue to put funds into that slowly in case of emergency. Lastly, there is the Bridge and Culvert Improvements Fund. This was used for the replacement of White Plains Bridge a couple of years ago and is being used towards Close Pim Bridge. Now, you may wonder why, since we've told you that the bridge construction is now covered completely by state and federal funding. There's two reasons for this. The first is that Webster's still required to pay the twenty percent of engineering services from the original eighty-twenty state agreement, though the majority of that is now done except for oversight of construction. The second reason is that Webster actually pays for the construction and then gets reimbursed by the state. I'll spare the accounting details, which Dana's gone into plenty of detail with our D.R.A. over, but we will essentially be on a circular pay, get reimbursed, pay, get reimbursed cycle as we go through construction. You'll likely hear us talking about a lot more next year, when we'll discuss what to do with all of the money that came back from all the reimbursements, as it doesn't just end up back in the capital reserve fund. With that out of the way, let me jump into the quick overview for the budget. Across the board, people cost more money. You'll see this on all the lines that are related, such as pay and insurance. This is seen especially in the police budget as they continue hiring to fill out the department again, and in code enforcement, where we've been looking for an officer instead of just an inspector, should we be able to find one. Various other inflationary items, such as software subscriptions and contracted services, are also up overall, and I'm happy to say that heat in this building is working wonderfully after the crisis of repeated heat system failure that happened last winter. However, this finalization of the full install was only done at the beginning of this, uh, of the year, like this year, after winter started. We don't have a year of time running on it to know the running costs for certain, so we're only reducing the propane line a little and increasing the electric line a little bit more to make sure that, well, it should cost significantly less to run overall, we definitely can't be caught by surprise. Solid waste disposal is also up significantly, and while that is always a best guess due to it being portions of both expenditures that are fairly well-known and revenues that aren't, this year had a more detailed discussion with Hopkinton, so the numbers should be more accurate. Please note that this does include some of the engineering and lagoon work in it towards that PFAS mitigation, but only a very, very tiny fraction. The majority won't be seen until after construction of that PFAS mitigation solution is completed in a few years, and then, uh, the loan payments start becoming due. Hopkinton will be going for those loans at their town meeting this year. Delving quickly into the funds, we finally have our new fire truck, but you'll see that the fire department vehicles fund request is higher anyway, as recommended by the C.I.P. Committee, due to the massive inflationary price increases of emergency vehicles, and we wanna make sure that by next time a major vehicle is needed, we don't need to add an extra million to the warrant. You'll also see a higher request for the Bridge and Culvert Fund. This is to make sure that regardless of the billing and, and cycle that goes on, we should be able to pay things on time while waiting on the state reimbursements. Highways and roads, the Reconstruction Fund, are up significantly to a level that they will need to be over the next several years to account for the projects that the C.I.P. Committee created. That is the overview. Uh, please, if you have any specific questions, I'd love to take them.
Code enforcement, I see that that's, um, quite a bump, but I think you just answered it. You're looking at hiring a, like a zoning enforcement person?
Yeah, so currently we have a code enforcement inspector. You'd go out and write a report on stuff, um, and that's standard code, whether it's building or, you know, something else. Uh, we have discussed, uh, in the past, going towards a code enforcement officer, who would actually be the one that, after doing that, writing the reports, bringing them back, having the deprocess, then saying, "We want you to go enforce that," uh, that would be that person. And so, that would be a significant increase in both hours and time used if they're actively doing this, uh, as well as responsibilities, and so the adjustment is in the budget to account for that if we are able to find an appropriate one.
Good, good. Um, I would, wanted to know, what is the, um, monthly fee for the bond for the transfer station? Do we have an estimate?
I emailed that to you.
If it's ten or twenty years?
I actually emailed that to you, it's part of the C.I.P.
Oh, you did? I haven't read that yet.
I did?
Sorry. I'll, I'll look it up, thank you. Well, I think that's all I have.
Just so we all know.
But, but I will say, um, just to, before we go on to the next, I will say, Dana mentioned the amount that was roughly like interest and stuff on it?
I've heard the percentages, but not a dollar.
The change in the interest between the ten and the twenty, is that what you're talking about? About a hundred ninety-two thousand?
So, it's about, it's about an extra hundred, it's about an extra hundred ninety-two thousand for the twenty-year instead of ten.
Yeah, that's the difference between the ten and twenty, but I'm wondering, what is the fee per year for a ten percent loan, or a ten-year loan, or a twenty-year loan?
You mean what the payment would be, the difference?
It varies per year, if I remember, the estimate of the...
They had a, well, I could tell you that if I could find where I...
Our portion.
Oh, ballpark would be fine, yeah.
It was about a ballpark of about tw- between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars, depending on where you are in, in the process.
That's the annual fee?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, not too chokeable.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, there was another, Kim?
No, it's, it's gonna...
Yeah, I can get it to Kim.
She asked for a monthly fee.
Okay.
And I'd have been emailing her, I just didn't know if you could go, do his emails real quick and clarify that.
Sure.
Just so we have actual figures.
You're happy now?
Yeah, I think I've got it to Kim.
And, other questions? Other, I, I'll take a few minutes, look through the budget, it's, I'm impressed with the, I guess I'm not...
I have a few questions.
Well, great, then I'll stop being impressed.
If that's okay?
Yeah.
All right, um, so a couple of questions. First, 'cause I heard stuff going on kind of at the, the board meeting, um, since we don't get a newsletter anymore, you gotta really read the minutes of me to find out what's going on in town, so it becomes very difficult, so I'm gonna ask some questions, and I'm just asking 'cause I don't see it in the minutes, that's why. So, first to the police chief, to, um, Steve, how many, currently, how many officers do you have?
We have one full-time officer.
Yep.
We, I've always had two.
Yep.
And we have...
And that's the on you?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
And then we have myself as a part-time officer. We have a part-time sergeant, and we just hired another, uh, part-timer. Who has to go to the two-week academy for his updates for the law package.
Okay. And what were you talking about earlier? You talking about you're looking for a grant, the basically what's up?
There was a matching grant that, uh, the federal government was putting out, so that would pay for a full-time officer for everything, his insurance, his training, everything, for three full years.
Okay.
At the end of the three years, we have to pick him up.
Okay.
The grant expired a couple of years ago, and they haven't brought it back. It's supposed to come back in January, but we haven't seen anything come out from the DOJ yet, and may not because of all the, um...
So, e- either way, you're still looking to hire another?
Well, if we can get a full-time grant, absolutely. It'd be foolish not to. Even if we had a full-time officer, if we hired one of the two that we're looking at, it'd be foolish for us not to hire another one, because it's fully funded for three full years. In three years, are we gonna need another officer? Oh, there's no doubt in my mind.
Okay.
So, we're gonna get three full years, insurance, everything paid for. Why not take advantage of that? If the grant...
I know funding pending.
I'm sorry?
I know funding pending.
Yep.
How mu- how many vehicles do we have right now? How many police crews?
Four.
Four police crews? And what's the approximate age?
I have three twenty-threes, and that was because one get totaled and they replaced it with a twenty-three.
Yep.
The new car we bought, I, instead of buying a twenty-five, I opted to buy a leftover twenty-three, saved us thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And it's brand-new, so why not?
Okay.
We save this money, and we won't need a car this year, we're not asking for a car this year.
Absolutely. Um, so beyond that, what do you, what do you, what did your total number of calls last year approximately? See, again, I hear you, I see in the meeting minutes, when I look at the meeting minutes, you give a report, but they never give you, you never give numbers, and that's why I'm asking, so I'm trying to...
Yeah, that's why I, this was the first time I did, for, I know it was...
And, you know, that makes it very difficult without knowing that. See, in the newsletter, we used to get it printed every month, so you could figure out how many calls you got, and just approximate calls for service.
I really couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I don't remember what the call was.
What did you, what did you do this past month? How many, did you say? I wasn't, it wasn't that loud, so I didn't wanna interrupt you.
So, we had, for, between motor vehicle stops and calls for service would be around sixty-four, sixty-five.
Is that, would you say that's above average, around average?
That's average right now, because we don't have the people on the road. That's average right now because we don't have the people on the road.
Correct, so you're not stopping.
That's the reason why. Otherwise it'd be a lot higher. Normally we average anywhere between 60 and 80 motor vehicle stops a month.
Okay.
And we're down to about 30.
Okay. Thank you. Emmett, how many calls for service did you get last year for the fire department?
227.
227?
Were 16 so far this year, Dave.
Of those calls, how many were, how many were fire calls? How many were progressive service calls? How many were medical calls approximately?
Well, the annual report that I got from Capital Area at the last meeting, I don't have in front of me.
What would you guess, Emmett? Just give me a guess.
I would say 20, I would say 80% of them are medical calls.
80% medical calls, okay. How many personnel do you have right now in the fire department? Approximately?
Oh, 16.
16? And of those, how many are medical? How many are fire? Approximately? I'm not gonna hold you to it.
Oh, at least half.
Half and half. What does the fire department currently have for vehicles? Apparatus?
Uh, we have a 2004 E1 pumper, 2012 E1 pumper, a '99 International tanker, a '98 Ford forestry truck, and ambulance, I think that's a '97 or '98 as well.
Yeah.
And a new tanker.
Okay.
And the previous police vehicle?
Oh, correct.
What years are they approximately, you know?
2016.
2016. Do you have any other vehicles? Do you have any other apparatus? You have a boat, right?
A boat.
Do you have any other equipment? Any other trailers, any?
Yep, we have an enclosed trailer that's 16, 18 feet long.
Do we got a cargo trailer?
Yep.
What's in the cargo trailer?
Nothing at the moment.
What's the plan?
Well, when the ambulance leaves us, we're gonna lose that cascade and that's where the cascade's gonna end up, so we don't lose that.
Okay. How many calls do you get for a cascade in the last one, three, five years? How many calls, how many calls do you get for the cascades this year?
Two or three out of town. Then we have a fire, we have it.
Yep. Are you using it on regular, regularly on calls, fires?
We have a fire call, respond.
How many packs do you have and how many spare bottles do you have?
We have 15 packs.
Yep.
Oh, there's three, four, five, six. Yeah, that's probably 10, 10 spare bottles.
10 spare? Okay, so you have almost enough for every person. So basically you could almost outfit your entire department and everybody has a spare bottle and they're 60-minute bottles, correct?
I wouldn't say they were 60-minute bottles.
Well, they're set up as 60-minute bottles, right? I mean, it depends on the individual.
Correct.
Right? Correct, so it's 16 bottles. So my initial question is, what was the reason that we actually got the police cruiser? What was, what was the point of having that on the fire department? I don't remember hearing anything about that at town meeting. And it seems like that just came up this year. What was that all about? Where did that come from?
Well, that was all about, they were gonna, what, trade it in? What were you gonna get for it?
$1,500.
Yeah.
It's got 300 and somewhat thousand miles if you count idling time and mileage.
So my thought with the, with that and what I talked to the SLAC board about is when you have a nice night and the wind's blowing and you're sitting out there beside the road with stuff falling down, you've got a car that's whatever's and you gotta, right now to replace one of them E1 fire trucks is $900, $900,000 to replace them. And if the windshield gets broke, it's out of service for however long it takes. And that was my thought. Instead of putting that $900,000 truck out into the weather when you're just chasing around wires and blown-down trees, it made sense to me.
Can I, can I ask somebody a question?
Sure.
So last department that I was chief at, every year I gave our old cruiser that we got rid of to the fire department. And that was the Tilden North Fire Department, so it ran both towns. It saved them running that car to answer some calls instead of sending a fire truck out for an investigation. If the car get totaled, if something happened to it, we're really not out anything because the car doesn't have a high value.
Right, but once you, once you add a vehicle, you generally don't lose a vehicle. So once you add a vehicle, you start building it in, you're always keeping another vehicle.
If anything, if anything, I would go for updating that car with one of our cars.
One of the old, yeah.
I would, and eliminate that car. We have no need to add another vehicle.
So why wouldn't you just run the forestry? Forestry's a basically one-done chassis pickup. Been done for years prior to that.
Well, Dave, I'm gonna tell you one thing right now. You've been around long enough to know when the, when stuff's happening in town, one vehicle isn't gonna be enough, okay? My pickup's 15 years old. I don't get a red cent to run that thing. I go to Deering for meetings, I go to Northwood for meetings, I go all over the capital area for meetings on my gas card.
Right, that's your choice, being chief.
Yeah, for $5,000 a year. Is it really worth it?
You have to stay up and be chief.
Hey, please, let me finish. You keep cutting the mic off.
Um, yeah, so we got a car.
So, okay, and my question is, so, so what is your intent to do with the other tanker? With the '99 tanker you're gonna sell?
No.
Why not?
Gonna use it for forestry truck in the spring. In building fires, I mean.
So we've just added another vehicle to the fire department then? We've added two vehicles to the fire department then?
So if the motor goes to heck or the transmission goes to heck, we're not gonna replace it. We'll scrap it. We're not gonna put any money into it other than just a few bucks if it needs it.
So where changed from the past that when we replaced a truck, we sold the truck? Because we didn't need it. You got 16 people on the department. What's your new truck? What's the difference between the old truck and the new truck? The '99 is a, what, 2,000-gallon tanker? What's your new?
No, it's an 1,800.
Okay, 1,800, my apologies. What's your new truck?
3,000.
3,000? So I assume that's a 10-wheel truck?
Yep.
How many people you got certified on the department with a CDL that can drive that?
Everybody that drives a fire truck down there has a CDL or they've been, they've taken a class at the academy to get their certification. And in the state of New Hampshire, you don't need a CDL to drive a fire truck.
That's correct, but you would agree that, you would agree that a 10-wheel vehicle, emergency vehicle driving on the roads here is a pretty significant vehicle.
Oh, and they're gonna, they'll have a CDL or that class.
Well, you just said they didn't have to have a CDL.
I said they don't have to, but that isn't how we do it at our firehouse.
Okay. So now we have two tankers, a forestry, two fire trucks, an ambulance, a cargo trailer, and a car.
Yep.
How many more calls have we got this year compared to the last five years, compared to the last 10 years? How many more calls are we getting if they're 80% medical calls? Why are we ramping up more on fire department side? Why wouldn't we be ramping up on the medical side?
Well, we're gonna, in May or June, we'll be replacing the ambulance that we have with a used ambulance. The new ambulance right now is $450,000, as you know.
Depending on what size, that's, that's, if you got the same size, you got not a smaller ambulance that you're looking at, it's not 450,000.
Well, that's not what I've been told. But that doesn't mean they told me right. So the town of Hoptikin has one that they're getting rid of and we're gonna purchase that for $50,000 to replace the '97.
Okay, so my question is, when you get a medical call today in the town of Webster, who gets called?
Webster and the town of Hoptikin.
Hoptikin can get a call. They're on automatic, correct?
Automatic.
Automatic. So when's the last, how many times have you been transported in the last one, three, five years to Webster area? How many times have you transported a patient to the hospital?
Usually once a year.
Once a year. So a vehicle transports once a year. What happens, what happens if Hopkinton doesn't, isn't available? What do you do then? Do you transport, take care of it?
Penny cook comes out.
No. So how much are you paying to the town of Hopkinton for the ambulance?
A year?
Yep.
Is that 30 grand?
36,000? Do you have any, do you have any indication of what long-term, what the, what the cost is gonna be? If there's gonna be a cost increase, because you realize that's a really good deal, right?
Oh, it's a real good deal.
Yeah.
It's a real good deal.
There's not a town in the region that pays anything like that for the number of calls they do. Correct. So my question is this, when I look at the budget, look at the fire department budget and I look at the police department budget. So I look at the police department budget and I say, yep, we look at the base budget, it's $353,000. And then there's a couple of capital reserve accounts, adds up to $376,000. When I look at the fire department budget, it doesn't look that bad, $115,000. But then we add on $37,000 for the ambulance. Then we add on capital reserves, air packs for $20,000, emergency apparatus running are $15,000, bunker gear for $3,000, medical equipment for $6,000, mobile communications for $10,000. Now we're to $300,000 budget. And we have a town that heavily relies on mutual aid for ambulance, relies on mutual aid for fire. Would you disagree with me, Emmett, on that? That we rely on mutual aid to fight fires and to basically cover the ambulance service?
Every town depends on mutual aid, not just Webster.
Right, I mean, we don't have people that live in town. I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, you're in town, Emmett, you're available. We don't have that many people in town.
At nine o'clock tomorrow morning, I might be the only person in town.
Correct. So my question is, why do we keep expanding our fire department with a bunch of apparatus that's unnecessary? What we have, and again, I support public safety, don't get me wrong. I support having a fire department, I support having a police department. But it seems like in the last several years, we keep adding more equipment and more vehicles for less people on that department and we're relying on mutual aid anyways. If there's a fire when closed-pen bridge is out and if there's a fire, right, you're gonna get engine five out of, engine five out of the manager station, most likely it's gonna come, or some other from Concord, we rely on Concord. They're not happy about that, if you read the paper.
I have an email right in my pocket, right from the chief, from John Chisholm, the chief, and all that stuff, and.
Well, the city council in Concord, if you, if you pay attention to the news, city council in Concord's the one that's gonna decide what the funding, what they do or not. It's not really up to the fire chief. I'm not saying you don't support each other, Emmett, please, that's not what my point is.
Okay, you have it. What's your question?
What my question is, I wanna know why we continue to expend the money we're expending and keep going more and more and more in the fire department for a fire department that relies on mutual aid.
That question goes to these three, not them.
Yep, that's one. I was just asking questions because I wanted to.
I understand, but now, are you done?
Yep, I'm good.
Do you have a question? Answer that question?
Sure. Like an answer.
Because it's your budget.
Yep.
And it should go to them at this point.
That's fine.
So as presented to us by the fire department and the police and all of the emergency services when this was happening, and this was, I think this has actually been going on for almost three years? It was when we went out for the replacement fire truck.
What's this?
When we started talking about the replacement fire truck that we finally just got. That was two years ago?
I've worked on that for four years.
So the expectation at the time was that, yes, we would trade it in, get, get our money back and then move on with a new fire truck. However, as time went on, both in us not getting the fire truck and in the changes in markets and it being such an old truck that would have been traded in, the trade-in was basically worth nothing. So it made a lot more sense to keep it and use the old truck as the quote beater truck of the tanker system, especially during spring mud season where a lighter truck can be an advantage and can get more places. The same argument was made with the police cruiser. And so this is not about expanding the apparatus. This is about making the most use of the apparatus that we have and putting the least amount of wear and tear on the brand-new equipment so it will last even longer and give us a better financial outlook.
But it really is. It really is about expanding the department because that's exactly what you've done. So you say it's a beater truck, but the question is, so you're gonna assure me right now, because Emmett just said that, you're gonna assure me that anything major mechanical goes on that '99 tanker, the town, you're assuring me, I'm gonna look at the minutes and I'm gonna see in the next one, two, three years that if that happens, something major mechanical, you're not gonna expend that money, right? Nothing, not a penny's gonna be expended, you're gonna junk it right then.
I'm gonna stop you now because the budget's for this year.
Yeah.
And you're not, and you're not gonna ever get a commitment, well, I'm, for two or three years, because that's just not gonna happen.
Well, I'd like to know, Dave, what I'd like to know is, because again, you can say you're gonna do it, but the problem is, we keep saying we're gonna watch expenses, but we keep expanding expenses and expanding expenses, that's my point I'm getting to. We keep expanding expenses and I don't think the board is properly looking at it. Because what you look at, well, it's good for now. What about down the road? There is a different board, there's a different three people in there. Well, yeah, that's fine, we'll expend more. So all we do is keep expanding a department that does not have the call volume to support the number of vehicles you have.
And, that's a judgment call.
Sure it is. But as a taxpayer, I have a right to ask that.
And I've let you, and you've expressed, and we've let you go, right? We've let you go. So you, you've expressed, it's their call, it's their call, it's in the budget, you get to vote.
The city of Concord, the same year as the '99, the six-wheeler we have down there is an international, that's a freight liner, they were both built by Valley Fire. They're doing, they're building a new 3,000-gallon tanker and they've been offered $2,500 for that tanker that's in the city. I give you $2,500 for that tanker down there right now, cash money. You don't want it.
So, so I will simply state that it is ours, I completely hear you. And for me, that's why I decided that this was a good path forward in order to save the future assets and make it more efficient and more economical in the long run. Not right now where we could have traded it in and had $2,500 bucks. But over the long run, not putting that wear and tear and additional abuse on a brand-new vehicle gives you more years of service out of it so we can get a long lifespan like we have out of the previous vehicles.
And.
To, to continue your request that we not spend large amounts to repair it and that Emmett said he didn't expect to want to do that. I would personally absolutely go against trying to spend large amounts to repair that. But again, I am one person out of three-person board, which changes every single year as many people are elected. So I can't guarantee that a future board will do something versus what we can now.
I know you can't, that's what I'm saying now. That's what I'm saying, you've made a decision that has encumbered future boards, that's what I'm saying. That's my point I'm trying to make.
And the biggest reason.
One board's set of decisions does not say that is.
Oh, it absolutely does. Hillsbury Lake DM is a perfect example. That board encumbered the rest of the boards. I know because I hear every year at town meeting. So you're wrong, I'm sorry. I disagree with you.
So that new truck is all at depth in all the computers and all the bells and whistles. People are rebuilding old trucks because of all that. So it's just, I don't know, it's just.
Are there other questions on the budget? Are there other opinions to be shared? I'm not voting, but just asking questions.
I just have a question, maybe whereas I came in a couple of minutes late, I apologize if I'm asking or generating something that's already been asked, but how much of our budget as a whole is all-inclusive? Is affected by federal grants? And any of the funding that has, and decisions that have in fact been made at the federal level currently in our countries? Juicy, recognizing, recognizing. And, and I understand, I haven't necessarily listened today or anything like that, but from my understanding, the last press secretary report that came to the public out of the White House made clear that there was in fact a pause. And although a judge was looking for an opinion on this date with the deadline of Monday, I didn't see an opinion decision handed down as of yet on only the OMB.
Your question, your question basically of all that is, is how much are we at risk for grants? How much?
How much is our whole budget gonna fluctuate? And how much do any of all?
How much of that comes through the state that you?
No, no, I'm not asking states.
Well, the feds, the feds probably.
Federal. Because counties and states would be a different meeting.
Well, in New Hampshire, it tends to filter down through.
I mean, Jean Shaheen, I was, I was reading how many actual budgetary programs is affected. And my concern is, in order to continue many of them, will they subsequently be placed on us and that burden of finance be placed on us at the local level? I just think we need to consider that. And I just would like to know how much of that is impacted.
I can give some context to that at least. I don't have a specific number in front of me.[1750.14] My recollection and understanding of this is that since we don't have the police grant, that's not affected. And that would be the only thing in our normal operating budget that we would expect grants from. Once in a while, we do get things from grants, or we use grants that we've already gotten. We did that with, for example, the ARPA funds. We've now gone through that and we finished them. So we're not owed anything, so nothing's gonna stop coming to us for that. We've already used it. The only portion that really is from the federal government for us is for Close Pin Bridge. And my understanding of that is that the way that it happens is that the 80-20 split that we were originally expecting with the state, the state has gone and gotten the rest of that money, which their Department of Transportation gets a fair amount from the feds in the first place. They went and got the rest of that money, all when they appropriated it and approved the project for us. So it's possible that some of that may be out. But I would fully expect that the state already is in control of those funds, and so they are not something at risk from the feds. Dana may be able to provide more insight onto that, or ask the Department of Transportation more, who may or may not provide more information. But that is my, my understanding of it, as was last described to me.
We have one grant, highway safety grant. But that, we get it every year. It hasn't come out and won't until June.
June.
So hopefully, and for speed enforcement, seasonal enforcement.
That's usually a few thousand?
About $6,500 bucks.
Yeah. And that, they, that's where they pay our police to spend extra time on the routes. So like 127 as opposed to our own local roads.
Kim, does that help?
And one question, may I have another?
Of course you may.
Oh, thank you very much. So, I understand we've kinda talked about the block grant type stuff that would be coming in. Like, does the library have any federal funding that you apply for?
I don't know the library trustees. The library is in charge of itself, and I don't believe I see anybody from the library trustees here who would be able to answer that for you definitively. I know that they do have their own fund that they generate funds from. And the only places that we see things are what they want to spend with an offset from their own fund, and then the rest is taxation. So if there's federal, it's specific programs that they bring in at a point in time. It's not like an ongoing running cost.
Another change that I saw that I, like, did, can anybody speak to the percentage increase? It just, to me, it kinda jumped out at me all over right quickly. For our parks maintenance, I mean, that's a significant, you just didn't get the explain.
Sorry, I have to find which portion of this for you. The parks maintenance on.
Oh, parks, not, I thought she said parts.
Second to last page under Parks and Rentals.
Sorry. That's what helped my, her, that she said.
I know that there were increased trees, but I know that we also moved trees into the municipal property fund for the maintenance of trees and stuff. And we did that, I thought, for both parks and for cemetery. It will take me a moment to go back and find where I have that further information, but I will, I will look that up right now.
Thank you very much.
I'm looking up, I.
It was, three trees in Pearson Park was 3,000. $1,050 for seven months of the rental of the porta potty. We hadn't had.
Ah, okay. It's adding the rental of the porta potty that's back there.
That answers your question on the maintenance, the rental of the porta potty.
And there would have been an additional 3,000 and change there for the trees, but we put that in, and are using that out of the municipal property maintenance fund instead of having it in the overall budget, because that way it can apply to anywhere. And so we're making sure that that fund has enough to handle all of these things and try to keep the budget as every-year standard operating budget as possible so that it's easier to follow the track.
And then, and again, I'm going on what Senator Shaheen has mentioned publicly. As I look at our community action program, and she specifically spoke, granted particularly to Stratford County, their community action program would be significantly affected as a result of the current situation in Washington. And I'm seeing with our bully budget, that's $5,400, and then in looking at that, in the next two categories above that, being welfare, which has in fact had an increase, as well as health agencies, will those potentially subsequently become burdens of our town? And are those potentially going to fluctuate? I mean, I just wanna have factual figures in my mind on the day of voting, whereas there is a significant amount of pause, shall we say, in place.
Sure. I'll, I'll cover two items, and then I'll turn it over to Dana to address the community action program, if he has further information.
Thank you very much. I just wanna make sure that it's not passed down.
For health, health really hasn't changed, and health administration is not us, like, going in and directly helping a person. It's not the medical or EMS. The health, for health administration and those health agencies, those are really membership dues. And so that's for our health officer slash health administrator and health inspector to be able to stay current, do his job, go where he needs to, and have all the certifications and stuff to stay current to do that. I don't expect those to change a whole lot. If they do, they are membership dues, so it's not likely to change dramatically. For welfare, welfare does fluctuate quite a bit, and Dana will be able to speak more to this in a moment. But welfare fluctuates quite a bit. And generally, the harder off people are as a full economy, the worse that welfare tends to get. But we are trying to keep a relatively stable welfare line, which is what we tend to be using on average across the years. We also have a welfare trust fund, so if we need to go above and beyond that, that continues to build safely in a minor amount. We have overdrawn some of the welfare lines in the past years because the budget was not at any kind of worry at that point. And rather than pulling out of the trust funds so that the trust funds would continue to stay current and good and not have to have lots of money put back into them, and thus have bouncing tax rates. So we're trying to flatten the tax rate for you the way that, the way that we've been handling it. I don't know if Dana wants to add further context on welfare and/or how much of community action program is a donation, a dues or a membership, or what they might have from feds.
I don't know about the federal funding. I do know that community action, for many years, the town were $100 donation. Last year, the community action program paid out to Webster residents $75,000 in the three programs that they most use most often, which is the housing, fuel assistance, and rental utility assistance as well. So, but I don't know about the.
$7,500.
$75,000.
$75,000, thank you.
They paid $75,000 to us.
They, they, they didn't pay it to us, but they paid it to clients that used $75,000 in services.
Thank you.
As far as the welfare goes, you don't know. It's, you know, it depends on a lot of factors of what you have and what people need.
Weather.
Welfare, and I think we, because of the lack of apartments that we have here, that in a sense, that helps us quite a bit. And as you know, rents are very high, and costs are very high. We don't have, I think last year I helped four clients. One of them was able to pay us back, which shows up in the revenues, which was not a normal occurrence, so I was glad for that. Also, I feel my job, part of my job with welfare is to avoid being sued, because I've seen that happen. Maybe it wouldn't happen here, but people come in. The welfare is, the town welfare is only a stopgap measure. And I try very hard to connect people with state health to come up with a permanent solution to their problems. And sometimes it doesn't involve money. Sometimes it involves a little lesson of Dana's budgeting 101, but anyway, and I, and I like doing that. But I don't know about the federal.
So just so that I'm clear in my mind, and recognizing that primarily these numbers from both of these items, the community action as well as health agencies, that essentially Webster residents are in fact utilizing the services of, are primarily reflected of memberships. And I, I just need to be clear in my mind. Are they in fact subsidized organizations? Because again, that's one other thing that Jean Shaheen mentioned. A good amount of nonprofits that again, provide services are too on a pause. So subsequently, if in fact whoever in, in our town would need those services, would those numbers, which to me, it was great to hear $75,000, would that potentially come down to us? Whoever utilizes those services for whatever programs they're using? Because I guess I may have to go to the county budget to find out as to how many nonprofits operate here within, in other words, servicing our area?
You know, and fairness.
Because I see, I see some in here, I see here, I see this.
So I think in fairness to tonight, I think in fairness to tonight, you're kinda asking a question that none of us know?
Correct. So we wanna make sure that when we present this budget, we're presenting factual figures.
Well, they're factual figures.
At town meetings, they're not factual figures, because we're at a pause.
The factual figures that we know today.
So, so here's how, here's.
If we, if we start predicting the future, we're gonna be here all night.
That, that has publicly been acted, there's a pause on that. So budgets need to be recognized as if, as well.
So, so here's, if I may.
You can do what you want.
So, so here's how I would suggest you take that. And I'm gonna try to address your concern, which is the possibility of exploding, you know, resources that are needed here. For the health agencies, those are, we pay to have them certified. That shouldn't change no matter what. And a lot of that's gonna be through the state and everybody through the federal government, everywhere, across every different state is going to have similar with these. Those are the, you got this certification, you have to get it. Now, if the department doesn't exist anymore, and so there's no certification to be had, then, well, we don't have to spend the money. But that's not gonna change how much we might have to spend there.
Correct.
For the community action program, that is the area. And so as we pay into the community action program with this donation, they, from wherever else they get it, support and help everybody. It would be, we are not going to have to pay them more than we are agreeing and was suggested as the donation amount. That budget line item will not change over this next year. They might not exist the year afterwards if all of this becomes a problem, but that line item is not going to change, so it is a definite value in our budget that is a factual figure that won't change. If they are unable to service and help all of these people, then some of those folks will maybe go in towards some of the welfare. But many of them will be sent to different state and other options. And so I, we don't have a way to guess what that figure would be. But that would be kind of your worst case. If they don't exist to serve people, then a small percentage of those people that are in Webster may wind back on welfare. That would be the risk in that location.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's just.
I just.
Welcome to budgeting in a small town in New Hampshire where everything flows downhill.
Well, no, I.
Was that a political statement?
Locks have facilitated a lot of help, just services for people in the past, with this pause, not knowing. I don't wanna put the burden on.
I guess, I understand, but my, my point here is, your phrase "not knowing" is the right phrase, cuz we don't know. And they don't, that's not fair to ask you to know.
It has been announced. Take a look at this. And when I saw that Jean Shaheen was a little concerned about a lot of this, and the vast amount of services and, and programs and things that were being affected, it really caused me to pause and say, oh my goodness, what could this do to Webster residents and all of my community as a whole?
I'm gonna say something else later. Then you can fire me as a moderator.
I feel as if we're not.
These arguments are closely related, because, because when you build a fire department for what might be as opposed to what is, it's gonna have a lot of unused stuff, right? If, so, same with the maintenance department, the welfare. To ask this board to predict the future and be 100% accurate is, is not a fair thing for town members to do. So, so thank you. Your questions are fine.
Personally, I need to look at myself, and this is only a fraction of our tax. I mean, county services, programs, significant amount of, of the expenditure that you're taxed on, on your property comes from there. I mean, it, it took me four days to get an itemized county budget, cuz no one wanted to give it to me.
Fortunately, we're happy to give you ours.
I know, thank you.
We have plenty of copies.
Thank you very much. I know freely and frankly, thank you too much.
Okay. Are there other questions for this? Yes, sir.
Do we have a start date on Close Pin Bridge?
Yes. Do you have the schedule right in front of you?
March 17.
It's like a few days after town meetings.
So this year?
This year, and it should be completely finished by November.
So that's shut off for summer?
Yes, it should be shut off and closed for summer.
Unless you're Daisy Duke.
That would be wonderful, because I was on the board 20-something years ago when we were looking at them.
It's been hell to get it through, but thankfully Dana's been able to push on them enough along with our newer.
The timing wasn't all that bad. It's not always would you get the reimbursement we got, so.
Yeah.
So for sure, maybe.
Yeah, right. The reimbursement's big.
Yeah.
Okay, four of us all up.
Yes.
Couple questions. You have two encumbered lines, under the cemeteries and under the fire department. You have encumbered from 2023. What's that?
That shouldn't be there. I should have, I should have gotten rid of that.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
I'm still impressed.
Then beyond that, so you've got the bottom-line budget, right, that you're showing? My question is, what basically is that versus what you anticipate for income? Though it's a little bit of a shot in the dark, and what is, what's the impact on the tax rate? If I may.
That will take me a second, but I will get that, that up for you.
While he's doing that, are there other questions on this article?
May I suggest that the correspondence that we got about the fire department be read at this point, since they are not here to place their opinion themselves? Since they are not here to place their opinion themselves? Yes.
These are very hard questions you're asking me.
Take them out of your papers.
You know better tonight than in a month from now.
Yeah, right.
If there are other questions, we'll be looked at. We'd be fine to hear.
Other questions on this article?
You're thinking of Mr.?
Alan.
Alan, yeah. We did receive a, Dave Hemmway received an email which he sent me a copy. And this was from a Webster resident who also sent me an email the other day. Good evening. I recently emailed with Dana regarding the fire chief pay for our town. My interest in contacting him arose from a conversation with the fire chief where I learned that his pay was approximately $5,000 plus of stipend for calls. I began to inquire about how much the surrounding towns paid. Warner is roughly $14,000 for the administration portion, paperwork, meetings, et cetera, plus $15 per hour for calls and training. I believe Boscoin is $40,000 plus a stipend for call and training. Knowing how many hours our chief puts in with select board meetings, Capitol area meetings, paperwork, vehicle maintenance, training and calls, he and the position are far underfunded. Unfortunately, I am working a 24-hour shift from my fire department on Monday and will be unable to attend the select board meeting. I know the chief is unlikely to request additional funding for his own position. To keep pace with the growing community and area, the future will likely necessitate the addition of a part-time position on the town fire department. I respectfully request that you consider adding funds to the line item for the fire chief position. This is from Matthew Fallon.
Okay. Did you add any, was that?
None of this has been changed. Just came in, I think, yesterday.
So it's not included?
Or something of that nature. Can you restate your question about the revenue portion?
What I'm looking at, you have your, I mean, I'm just jumping right to the notion. I mean, we can break it up if you want, but I'm including the capital reserve fund. So we have a, it appears based on your entire budget that you have a total budget basically of $2,569,503, which is an $11,000 decrease from last year. That's fine and dandy, but really comes down to what's the revenue versus taxes. So what I'm looking, if we pass every article, including the capital reserve accounts, because I can break it if you want to do it separately again, what's it versus what the income, what anticipated income? And I understand that's a little bit of a shot in the dark number right now. But anticipated income, what's it going to be as a baseline impact on the tax rate this year?
Sure. So to jump straight to the, well, I'll give you two numbers. We've projected about six, a little over 6% increase in revenues. And combined with the decrease, what I will say is that for the tax rates, we had projected a tax rate of 487 last year. Our projection is for 484 this year, so down 3 cents. The calculated tax rate of using actual numbers for the past year was actually only 451 because we didn't have quite all of the expenses that were needed, or I should say that were put in. And more importantly, we did get a fair amount of additional revenue than was expected. Largely from, we did not, when we budgeted, we did not expect that the economy would continue to explode. So we got a lot more from meals and rooms than we budgeted for.
The other thing is impacts of tax rate. If you could, I don't expect it tonight, but I've asked this before at town meeting. So we spent a lot of money on a solar array years ago. I would love to see year over year what is costing us for utilities and what we're saving on utilities every year. Because we spent a lot of money on that solar array. And that was the whole point of spending the money on that. And I would really like to see that as a breakdown year over year since we've had that. So we're looking that we're getting our return on investment because that's what we were told. I think we are. I don't know if we are. So that would be my next.
I will try to work with Dana to get something like that to put it in. The, I don't think it was in there last year because there were issues with some of the meter reporting. But for years prior to that, that information was actually in the energy committee report. So if you go through the town reports, you'll see a bunch of that information. Like this is how much we used and produced for electricity and.
What I'd really like to see though is a year over year since we originally encumbered that money. Spent that money, which is back many years. And then as another follow-up, I'm going to think here because I lost my train of thought on that one. We, you have Close Pin Bridge.
Sure.
Project anticipated. Do you have any other major road projects anticipated this year?
I would defer to the road agent for that. There are, I believe, three that were approved by the CIP that may be included, which is where the 270 towards road reconstruction comes.
So we got no detour. Working with the CIP in the committee, they wanted to get Detour Road done up. So when the bridge was done, everything was done. Usually we do 1,500 feet a year, and that's 3,000 feet. So if we have money left over from that project, we'll probably go down and start on Lake Road. I don't know what else the CIP had in there.
I think the other one was the portion of Little Hill.
And I think there was some on Pleasant Street. Correct, Russell?
Yep.
That the CIP had recommended.
So Detour is going to be your main focus based on?
Yes, they.
On the bridge. Thank you.
Maybe a little bit out on the Close Pin Bridge. While they do that bridge, there's a culvert just right off the bridge headed towards D's that goes across. It's been there forever.
I think that's actually changing during the bridge construction.
I'd love to see that culvert underneath and buried with soil.
Me too.
Thank you.
When do you anticipate you're going to reroute the traffic? How are you going to reroute the traffic? What do you anticipate? Going up over Pleasant Street?
A lot of it will go Pleasant Street. But from what I had understood, I had talked into Chad, the people from Cold River that took up the bid, they weren't planning on closing down Detour Road completely. So like on the weekends and nights and stuff that can be opened up.
But you're not going to be able to get by there during the weekdays, I would assume.
No, they, they say you.
They expect a lane open? Okay.
They expect to have a lane open for at least local traffic for Detour and Close Pin going around the bridge. The rest of the Detour, once you get Detour or Pleasant either way, goes all the way up to Long Street.
Exactly.
Right. And then you've got Bashen Hollow to Garrish and then Corn Hill and then to the Red Barn. So it's, I know a lot of.
That's what I expected. I'm just curious.
I know a lot of folk are concerned about tractor trailers on the dump road, but there's other ways through there. It's just going to be a pain for a couple of days.
Cost of a new bridge?
Yep.
Okay. Going once. Any more questions? We're still on, any more questions?
Yes, my quick question is, with the Close Pin Bridge thing, do we, and this, the pause that's happening in DC right now, are we guaranteed to get that money back? Or is that going to be in limbo with this, with the grants being in pause?
So we kind of addressed this. We don't have a way to guarantee what the state's doing, but the state has basically handled all of that. And in theory, the state already has the money from DC.
They do.
In theory.
Oh, in theory. So they don't.
So we are, we are under every impression and have been given every impression that this was already budgeted and appropriated for by the state. And so we don't have to worry.
Because it's been many years.
Well, I was going to say.
And I also wanted to ask about the, you know how we switched to that new electric co-op, whatever it is?
Yes.
I don't know about anybody else, but I am ecstatic. But how did the town work with that?
So I gave an announcement at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if you were here to hear that.
Please don't read it again.
So yeah, I'm not going to go through it. The town immediately switched and we've saved quite a lot on it. I don't have figures because we haven't really tracked that to an account level. But the town has saved quite a significant amount doing that as well. The, look for the statement that I made. I can probably send you a copy and/or you can find it on either of the Webster or Pillsbury Lake Facebook groups. The rates are going to be higher for the coalition for this coming six-month period, which started February.
Is that because of the groundhog?
Read the thing, please. We have blamed so much.
Please go and read it, yeah.
So I'll leave it at that. If you have other questions, I'm happy to answer them about that after the meeting, but.
I know it cut our rates unbelievable, so.
Yeah, so we are expecting that we will continue along similar rates for this first six-month period and that probably similar rates to these in the second six-month period of the budgeting are what are going to be in the budget and what we would expect. The first portion may have some periods where we're back on unit bill instead of on community power. But whichever makes the most sense for the town is what we will be trying to do.
I do have a quick question for the police chief.
Yes.
It's scary to, we have four vehicles, right?
Yes.
How many are marked?
We don't have.
Are marked or unmarked?
Two marked, two are not.
So why do we have unmarked?
We have two that are unmarked. We haven't paid to mark them. And if we do, we're going to mark them with the same type of markings we have.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious why we're, you know, sneaking.
We.
Or if it was going to stay that.
Sometimes it's not bad. I don't, I don't believe we'll mark both of them. We're probably going to be marking one of them.
Right.
And we want to mark.
And because of the police force that we have right now, we have several, you know, quite a few part timers. We're not going to ever go back, go above four. I know that you're, you're not going to be here.
No.
And I probably won't either.
No.
But maybe if one of them.
If I had my way, we'd have two full timers and no part timers. Two full timers.
And I understand that, yeah.
And that's what we're looking to try to do.
This day and age, it's not what we want. It's what we get.
If we can get a federal grant, that's really the process.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Any more on this part? Okay, let's go to number three. And have you been reading it while we've been talking here for the last half an hour? Are there any questions on three? I don't feel the need to read it tonight. I'll read it at the meeting, but I don't think I need to read it tonight. Are there questions on four? The $530,200 capital reserve funds. Other questions? We're once going twice. Five. See if the town will raise $85,450. Again, it's going to trust funds. Take a minute and look down through those three questions.
I will simply point out that as we mentioned, we put several extra thousand into municipal property maintenance when taking it out of, for example, parks and rack and cemeteries for tree maintenance.
That allows you a lot of flexibility in how you spend it.
Yes.
Okay?
Quick question.
Yes.
How's our new legal team?
She's asking how our new legal team is.
Oh, legal team.
I like our legal team.
Good.
Yeah, it's worked out well.
We had gotten a new.
John Ratigan, who we had before, retired.
Yep.
Our new lawyer is named Chris Hawkins, also from the same firm.
Cool. Okay.
And so far, we've had very good experience with them. He came two weeks ago, two meetings ago and met the board. And I think that they were impressive.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
So far, so good.
It's like we're sure that you don't know till you need it.
That's right.
Well, exactly, yeah.
All right, that's five. Six, to see if the town will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year under the provisions of RSA 3198A. For unanticipated expenses that may arise in further raise incorporate the sum of $18,279 to put into the fund. The sum is to come from the unassigned fund balance. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund as an individual warrant article. Any questions on that? Is that something that might need to be explained at all or pretty well for it?
We've done it for the past several years. The amount is based on previous year's budget, 1% of the previous year's operating budget. The money comes out of the fund balance. And if it's not used like it wasn't in '24, it goes back under the fund.
Dave?
Yes.
This is off the topic, but individual warrant article. This is a petition warrant article. It says individual. How does that happen? I'm sorry, but.
No, that's just the legalistic wording that Dana uses.
Yes, I should send you the definitions before I try to quote it to you.
Thank you.
Because I have to read it several times every year to remind myself where.
If you were. We had that conversation about two hours ago. All right. Any other questions on that? Seven, to see if the town will vote the sum of $10,000 to help offset the cost of the bond for funds to repair dam passed at Pillsbury Lake water districts April 5th, 2006. The sum is to come from the unassigned fund balance. It will not have an effect on this year's tax rate. Again, this is an individual warrant. You already wrote a card. Any questions on the $10,000 for the day?
Two more years?
Two more years?
I believe it's this year and next year. This is a change from the way that it's previously been done. Previously, it has been an appropriation. So you've gotten the tax of $10,000, or I should say you've gotten taxed on the $10,000 that's being spun. This year, we have it set to come out of the unassigned balance so that we, as this is not a normal occurring town expense, I mean, it has been, but it's not going to be going forward. We felt that that made the most sense to do it and to then do it again next year as well, which hopefully the board will decide to do that, but we'll see. But the, that is the intent to do that. And the other option for things like unassigned funds other than voting to use them for a purpose like this is to offset taxes. But that gives kind of a false tax rate as Dana will be very happy to talk your ear off about if you want to ask him about it individually at some point. But the essence is those are basically the only ways that we can use this. The bridge fund is one of those ones where it'll be kind of going through that. And at the end of it, we'll all end up back in this unassigned fund. So probably next year, we will be talking about how and where we should put and use those sorts of funds towards the future. But we don't have that now. But that is a change for the Pillsbury Lake dam payments of $10,000 so that it is not additional taxation on you this year.
Great. See if the town will vote to release the history committee funds held in trust to the general fund of the town of Webster and further to release those same funds to the Webster Historical Society. The sole purpose of publishing the next town of Webster history book by 2033 or later. Any questions?
Correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't this have been by petition by the historical society?
It is by petition.
It says, yeah, received by petition.
Oh, sorry. I was reading that as for the next section.
And this was. I should have said received by petition.
I'm sure somewhere about how much is in that fund?
I think it's $10,000 something.
It's about 15, I think. But the town never put any money in it. It was the history committee that gave it to the town to say, keep this for 50 years and publish the next book. And so we're trying to get.
It's been more earning interest though.
It has been, yeah.
As of last year, it was about $10,500.
Oh, really?
I don't, I don't know what it is now.
Okay. In 2023, it was 15,000 something, but I'll have to look. Maybe that is an error.
Maybe my numbers wrong, but.
I think when there was a report done the previous year, there was an error on the lines. I think that's what happened.
Somebody gave this 10,000.
It got aligned on the wrong line, if you know.
But it's somewhere between 10 and 15-ish thousand for those that are considering it.
Kim, you had your.
Yeah, the history committee has always been a part of the town. Because the society for the reservation of the old meeting house has had prior for all these years. been a separate entity, having nothing to do with the history committee within the town, within that local government office. I just want to be clear. They were two separate entities. So we don't want to have that convoluted. A history committee has always been within the town offices. So we don't want to collude, I mean confuse or convolute anything. The society for the preservation of the old meeting house has always been a separate entity.
Who was the history committee?
Jonathan, I'm going to, to be honest with you. And I can show you all the old annual reports where the history committee gave their annuals. Oh, I'll take the volumes to you. They should work.
As a matter of fact, you know what? You know what?
We're gonna hold up the...
The Historical Society has numerous copies. The annual report did include that information.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, that's...
We just don't want to be convoluted.
So...
The society for the preservation of the old meeting house, of which some people are now doing business as the Webster Historical Society, has always been a separate entity from the Webster Historical Committee.
So my understanding...
That has been in place for a good many years.
Okay, well, let's explain.
Yeah, so my understanding...
I just care what this says. I don't care what the history is. I don't care what the...
We don't want this convoluted.
I want to know what this says that we're voting on. So this says the money's going to...
The society for the preservation of the old meeting house never did the original history book. The history committee of Webster did.
Where is that?
The original one. It says that the purpose of these funds is...
Where is that listed? Where is that listed in number eight?
This was put in by petition, so maybe they didn't know.
It says...
No, but where does it say that?
For publishing of the next history book. That's what I'm reading.
Where does it say the meeting house?
I would like to...
For the sole purpose of publishing the next town of Webster history book.
So I... Okay, thank you.
The history committee for the town of Webster published the first one.
So it is...
And the second one. Not the society for the preservation of the old meeting house.
But I don't see it. It says the meeting house. Why is that a part of it?
I can answer that.
So I want to go to this, and then I want to give the petitioners time to state why they put it in. The first thing I'll state is that Kim is at least roughly correct in that they are two separate entities. The society for the meeting house, or now called the Webster Historic Society, as we commonly refer to them, are the ones that take care of the meeting house. They've done a wonderful job with it, by the way, and keep track of all kinds of historic documents and stuff in town for us and do a bunch of things in that regard. They are a separate entity, and at least as long as I've been in town, they always have been. The history committee was a committee that was under the town at one point, of which many or most of the people that were in it, I believe, became part of or formed the Historic Society. I wasn't in town when that happened. Maybe the Historic Society wants to talk about more of the history, maybe of how that happened. Maybe they don't. However, what is in front of us is this particular petition warrant article that is by them to request that the history committee funds be released to them to create a history book. And so on that note, I will let them speak about that and what their process and why they believe this is the best path forward.
That's why you're here.
Yes, it is. First, the society for the preservation of the old meeting house filed a trade name application, and it has been in effect for several years, with the state of New Hampshire for the name Webster Historical Society. So they are, in fact, the same organization. And so that answers your question, yeah. And I agree, they are absolutely separate from the town. What Kim says cannot be actually verified. I went through all of the records for the town and for the society, and there is no record in either place that was up, that these committee was appointed by the town or by the Historic Society. So it was probably an independent committee and probably right before the bicentennial. Dee was...
Yes?
There was a similar committee that got together, just citizens of the town, that put together the quilt that's back there and another group of citizens of the town, not part of the town, except that they lived here. But all the members of the history committee were actually members of the Historic Society, the society for the preservation of the old meeting house. The only two remaining members that actually put the book together actually signed a request that those funds be turned over to the current Historic Society to publish the next book. So the next book is due out in '33 or '34.
So you're looking to do that with this petition on it?
Did Mrs. Pearson?
Yes, she did.
She did?
Which one?
Did Marge?
Yes.
Marge did, and then Pearson did.
Wow.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. Being that this is to fund the books, does that mean that the books will then be provided to Webster residents, at least as a PDF? Or would these then be getting additionally sold to make further money towards the preservation?
Probably both. Considering that bound books are, hmm, they're not passe, but they're getting old-fashioned, will more than likely print very few and make the others available, you know, as, well, not PDFs, but electronic books that can be purchased through, oh, I don't know, something, Amazon, the library, something. But yes, there will be a cost, because there will be a cost, more than the $10,000 of putting it together.
Kim?
Can I just quickly ask, is the place of operation for the Webster Historical Society online to produce a PDF?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Do they have access to the internet at that location?
No.
Oh.
And you know that.
Now, come on.
How can you produce a PDF?
Separate everybody.
Okay.
All right, we done with that one?
I would, can I ask, do we have any more history books ever, anywhere around here that are still around? I have one, but I mean, did we sound, I can't remember how many we printed and sold.
All of them.
How many did we print? I can't even remember.
I don't have the numbers. I know that probably a couple hundred at least. People are still asking for the previous history book.
Yeah, we should have printed a lot more, I guess, but hindsight is...
One of the things that we were thinking about is reprinting that one.
Oh, that's a good idea.
But if you remember, all the old history books, about half of the printed book is genealogy. And genealogy, Barbara's been working on it for years now. She's got about 80,000 people in the genealogy database. And that doesn't need to be printed in a book anymore.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
It really can't be. 70,000 people, it's another book.
Yeah, I guess that's a good question. You can talk about it during the meeting.
Yes.
Well, I think I filled out that a long time ago. All right, the next one, and this is by petition as well. Is someone here to talk about this next petition article? It's dealing with state funds for private education.
I don't have anything to do with petition, but as being on a school board member from Webster for 30 years, I'm so against this that it's not even funded. This is... This is not, I don't think we should be supporting private schools and all that, because you don't know what they're gonna be teaching and the whole thing.
So let me just, because I'm a little dense right now. You're not against this petition article? You're in favor of the article saying that they're not to do that?
Right, yes, thank you.
Just making sure.
I've been spending 30 years on the school board.
Any other questions that you have or for this? Yes.
Next year is the 250th anniversary of American independence, and I think we should be doing something as a town to commemorate the event. The Old Home Day, of course, the Historic Society, but we haven't even thought of what that might be, the town itself. And I understand the money for the Old Home Day comes from a town appropriation, so is there sufficient funds to do something? Because this isn't gonna come around again.
I think you have a year to plan on it.
I'm sorry?
You have a year to plan on it.
But you may not have extra money.
Well, we may have to appropriate the money like that.
You need to find volunteers.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll do that anyway.
So right now, the funding is at the same levels that it has been in the budget. So the budget currently has the funding for things like Old Home Day at the same rate that they've always been.
Yeah.
And so for them to do something additional, and I agree that they're at least one of the most major entities to be able to put together some sort of celebration if it's going to be either additional or instead of on a specific different day, just this is the right year and a larger Old Home Day, that would be the place to do it. That has not been added into the budget at this point in time. The budget that was going to be presented here today was finalized before that suggestion came in. I'm certainly not against looking at that. If anyone has either specific suggestions for what the town should do or if the Old Home Day folks want to come to us and say, hey, we'd like to do more with this so that we can, and then we would like some more money to do that. I'd be completely in favor of listening to that. None of that has happened as of this point. Can we actually reach out to them and ask them if they have any thoughts about it? Even though it's not directly their thing, because their Old Home Day, not the bicentennial.
I don't think there's too many people on the Old Home Day committee, to be honest with you.
Correct, which is why I don't want to sign them up for anything. They haven't asked me to do it.
Because when I was on the Old Home Day committee, we had like 20 or 25 people, so that was, you know, and then we used to give food away and all kinds of fun stuff, because we couldn't sell anything at Old Home Day, so we decided that we'd give it away. And that kept everybody at the Old Home Day, which was nice.
Are we able to, at what point in time are we not allowed as a town to add a warrant article? For example, if we wanted to add a warrant article to allow X amount of funds out of the unassigned fund towards a bicentennial?
Once you post the warrant, you cannot add another.
And so what date is that?
That needs to be posted by the 24th of February.
The 24th of this month?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have about two weeks to hear from somebody if they want to do something with that. I believe John had his hand up. I don't know if that...
Actually, I'd be very supportive of that. Just a recommendation that maybe a committee of both the standing Old Home Day committee and Historic Society. I must reveal, I live right across the street from Historic Society. Big supporter, and I'm going to tell you, it's been very, very pleasing to see activities over there during the year. I know during the summer, every weekend, something's going on. There was an event, and I can't remember, it was a year or so ago, they held, and it was one of the nicest events in this town I've gone to. They had a picnic going on, a cookout, and people coming there and stuff like that. I forget the name of the event. It crushed my memory.
I think that was finishing the restoration.
It was, thank you, finishing the... But it was a great afternoon, and I thoroughly enjoyed being a neighbor and thoroughly enjoyed seeing you. Just my two cents, but thank you.
Thank you, John, thanks. I might add, it's lit inside now. The turf service, the, yeah, you're gonna have lights.
Did you get your fire alarm fixed?
No, fire extinguishers, not an alarm.
Any reason why we shouldn't have driven?
One thing, Dana, would you please talk about the hazardous mitigation plan? What we'd like people to do?
We have, sure. Thank you, John. The hazard mitigation committee has been meeting for a few months now. We have a few months left. It is updating the town's hazard mitigation plan, which is a plan that we need in order to get any sort of federal grants, if there's such a thing left. However, they have a survey that they're asking people take, and we'd very much appreciate it if you would take the survey. It's on our website, I believe. It's also in the clerk's office and Russ's office. You could pick up a paper copy. And we very much appreciate your thoughts.
Any business to the warrant article as I put on my coat? We're adjourned.
To be clear, that is adjourning the public hearing portion.
Yeah, the stockman's still here.
So that is...
Where we going?
That is 8:37, unless there are any further comments or discussions for the budget and warrant public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We'll take a quick recess after closing the public hearing at 8:37, and we'll start again at like 8:40 or so. So if you're gonna continue to talk for, please just don't do it up here. The microphones are sensitive and will pick all of it up, and it will be recorded for at least as long as YouTube exists. So if you're going to continue talking when we try to have our meeting, you may want to move it along towards either outside or downstairs. Thank you.
Just a quick and public question for Dana. When do you need articles written for the town report?
We would love to have them by last Friday. But I do know who's putting it together, and I might be able to talk them into a few more days. If you could have it maybe at the end of this week would be great.
Give it a try.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just gonna give you these things.
Sure.
People sneeze in the law.
They're all getting lots of...
And
Well, other than adding drop off, you're attempting to Didn't even stay for the year? Retiring our way?
So, what are you gonna do with your child?
I think you need to visit him.
And he was the chief with three guys. He was the chief.
I did this last month. And I thought it was last year, really. It's not. Man, you might, you really are good with your You didn't go over how many different It was just bad checks, I wrote bad checks, he said, you know, we were all so ill, Tom, we were just bad checks.
Yeah, like If this one were in ten thousand
Knocked out now, I would make sure. They never ruled They can't have all everything.
I get this started by the line. Hopefully, hopefully, there won't be These kids are playing. That's what's the worst. Are you seeing it now?
I can't have it tomorrow.
I was looking at this, I thought it looked like me and Black.
It didn't cock without That was, I've lasted about five minutes. So this is, this thing lasts a lot longer.
It works, it works.
It'll get different.
She's, she's folded one day, she's got this, so Just wanted to see if I could It'll sit, it'll do the same.
And they come to I think we got a whole
Chippy, chippy. Whoppy, whoppy. Dee.
All right, we've now gone beyond that if it is need for the five, so I can finish our meeting. If you would like to score, if you would like to listen, please feel free.
Come on. Dee. Dee, this way.
We've talked to all of them, too much to finish her meeting.
I wasn't going home, I'm just Well, it's Keep going that way. We are, no.
I love talking to everybody, but
You didn't, you didn't ask You're gonna have to give me a right Well, you did it on a bar This is very I am impressed, man.
All right. So, that news, that's from our public hearing, too old business. I never know what's in Dana's folder.
Yeah, I know, I don't have that much for you tonight, so I kept that for you. Uh, I've, I've already done it.
Good.
Donation and
Sweet, correspondence? We have a good time, God.
I, I know we read out the one correspondent. Oh, and the other one that was from Barbara, she mentioned the bicentennial thing already.
Bring the nice email, the other email that Emmett got about the Can we bring this one for the board?
Um, I didn't, so
We can forward that one, do you, apparently, somebody, Emmett went out of his way and had somebody, an emergency.
And we got a very nice, a nice
Very nice email.
I thought I'd do it, I'm a regular. Little tactic. Um, I do have things for you to sign. The first thing for you to sign, and this usually just Dave signs this. Oh, great.
They say, sure.
That's a good idea.
See, lock the door, not scared.
Um, this is for the auditors, it's our agreement letter that we sign every year. And you would be signing for governance.
For what?
The governance part, that's, Dave is the only one that's signing that.
Oh, Dave, you're the only big shot to sign that. I have like five of them on my desk at work. And I don't know why, I would just sign them.
I would just sign and get rid of them.
That's, I know, I know, I know you could come here and say, Marlo, really?
Okay, so I'm gonna set this here, I will actually read it after we're done and then sign it.
You can, you can give it to me another time if you wish, this is the manifest.
Yeah, why don't you get that reading, tell me what it says? Am I not supposed to sign mine either?
The short version is, we, we are agreeing to provide auditing services.
But we don't guarantee any.
That's right, and I, yeah, so, that's why I wanted them, let me know if there's something special that I should know about.
And then they do it, you know, according to all these, whatever.
What's Advantage Laser Products?
Uh, envelopes.
Oh, those are the new, best thing to come.
Those are for Russell.
Inventory envelopes.
Well, do they have the town return address and all that?
They have a window on them, so that I can just fold them, slide them in.
Wow.
Yes, that's the bridge construction.
Now, that's good.
It saves me a lot of time.
I know, because you're not, you're not getting paid for them, boy.
Because the inventory is taking me about three days to Or more, actually, a week, I think it's a week, because I gotta print them all, I wasn't counting printing time. Now I gotta follow them all, and I gotta put them all in the envelopes, and I gotta ride them to the machine. And then drive them down the Because we can't fit them all in the mailbox.
They told us what signs they took.
Oh, that's true, yeah. Well, you need a break, you can drive down, get some lunch.
It's not that far away, it's like twenty minutes.
Huh?
It's like ten minutes away, ten minutes.
I, I wish one of the safety building folks was still here. This is listed for Derby and Sons, for the Public Safety Building, temporary fix on South Side Valley. And I'm sure that they did the appropriate thing, because they have plenty of good experience. But I'm curious what is temporary about it and what they think will need to happen in the future for the fix, because that's probably icing in the valleys of the, the roof of the safety building.
I'm sure whatever it is is going to cost several thousand dollars more to be untemporary. That would be my guess.
Are we gonna ask?
Uh, balance on fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-four for Town of Hopkinton.
For what?
The Town of Hopkinton, so that's the, it's an extra twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and eighty-five cents uh, above last year's expenditures towards the, the transfer station.
That was for the
Did we expect that in encumber?
We did not, I didn't expect that twenty-two thousand, which was for the PFAS study. Engineering study is what it was.
Yeah.
Do we have any federal money for that, doing that study or anything? No?
No.
No.
No. So do we need to raise the budget line by that to account for it, or can we take it out of last year's because it's a last year thing?
Leftover money, you mean, if they have any leftover?
I don't really have it in last year's budget to take it out of, I mean, I could
And then it could go over.
It could go over, of course. Um, I could talk to the auditors about that and see if they want to do that. The trouble with doing, I mean, always, Hopkinton is usually always late, or it comes much later than what, and I'm not criticizing them, but it comes too late for us to get into the same year. So the, the, the year change screws us up every time.
Can they ever give us like an estimate so that we can each year encumber that we expect this amount?
Well, I suppose I could ask them for that date, but I'm lucky I get a bill. Sorry, I didn't say that.
All the more reason we don't want to have to deal with twenty years' worth of bills for loans.
Yeah. And one of the reasons why they forgot to bill us for that is because they hadn't encumbered it from the previous year and
Oh, so Dana's little statement's about over encumbering stuff is, uh, coming home at a roost.
You know?
Don't do it too much.
Well, you know how I hate to kind of think, because I wanted to fund that.
What was that?
That's postage fee.
Oh, no, you're just being mean to me. You weren't like, pay encumbrance.
I guess if we don't have it in our would it make more sense to just take it out of the transfer station fund?
Good.
Or does it make more sense to let the budget go over?
You know, I think
Because we're too early to really know what the state of the budget's gonna be. I don't want to just, oh, let's go over by twenty-two grand.
You know, I think if we get into that situation, we'd have opportunity to do something about it. I'm not worried about the twenty-two thousand. Not that, you know, it's not, not a small amount, but on the other hand
I guess then, if we're not worried about it, I guess overdrawing that budget line, I think makes more sense. Because that's the more transparent way people will see it.
Well, I kind of like doing it that way, because when you see it, you say, well, why?
And they'll probably miss a fourth quarter for the end of the year anyway, so
Well, that's where I'm going with it, yeah, exactly.
That's what I was thinking.
But it's kind of like, if you see it overdrawn, you say, well, why is that, and then you have a reason for it.
Mm-hmm.
But you're right. The fourth quarter for twenty-twenty-five might come in twenty, February twenty-sixth.
I didn't realize we had a separate account for you until for the ball field.
Yeah.
Is that in our net meter structure still?
No. No. Um, and you know, that, that, uh, that's not on all the time, I have it shut off, so I don't have to pay the forty-one dollars when we're not using it.
That makes sense.
They, that's, we had to have it turned on for the Christmas tree.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. Although every time they turn it on, and all they do is that's forty-something dollars, or if they shut it off, it's forty, you know, there's a charge.
Really?
Yeah, because for you until to come out and disable service or enable service is a charge.
Oh, we just can't push the button, in other words, they have to come out and do it.
You, you'd have to pay the minimum charge of forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents for using nothing. So I figure, well
Yeah, you might as well send it out, send them out.
Six of one. We usually have to have it turned on for Old Home Day and the Christmas tree now.
I was gonna talk to Dave about an idea.
Oh.
That, Addie brought that in, right?
Yep.
Oh, this thing? Yeah.
Oh, the wonderful favorite machine.
Yeah.
It needs to eat.
Well, it's about to eat a lot soon.
Is that the inventory thing? How is that done for printers? I know it used to be the, the jammy printer, and then that was yours, but not really.
I'm gonna run my printer until I'm running my little printer until it dies.
So your little printer will actually do it?
Hopefully.
Did you do it that way last time?
I did it last time.
Okay.
It's giving me a little trouble lately, because last time I printed, it was a little funky.
Well, we have several of that printer in this, in this building, so you could borrow another one.
That's what I said, worst case scenario, I unplug Dana's printer and bring it over to my computer.
Well, if you got me on a good day, I could do it.
I'm not gonna wait until you have a good day, I'm not even gonna ask, I'm just gonna go and do it.
You're very bold.
I'm sure the board
That's why he's the assistant.
I feel like I've lost control.
I'm sure the support, the board would support me in that action of utilizing it. You'll get the new printer, and I'll keep the old.
I'm the one that had to go through that thing with Wendy on the other
Do, do we have further correspondence, or I guess documents to sign?
That's all I have. You've signed them.
That's, that brings us two minutes, as everybody had a chance to read them.
We're trash. What?
And I wasn't here, so You weren't here, that's right. I can argue with them right or wrong. They looked good to me. They look good to me. They look good to me.
Make up for this meeting.
I see her shuffling, define them.
No, no, right here. I'll make a motion that we, there's not many of them either, so that's even better, that way they accept the meeting minutes of January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I believe that will do it, is there, because we don't have public comment.
This is usually when you decide who's supporting and
Thank you. Yes, so on the warrant, um, normally we have a first and second, uh, to who's going to first and who's going to second.
Oh, right, I was wondering.
Who's gonna talk about it, if we do, though, I'll probably give the same, we're very similar spiel in front of everything. Uh, yeah, though I intend to also do, uh, an interesting one with, um, if I have time, uh, to go through and do several budgets over the last few years, including the current one, as adjusted by inflation, to show that we're actually doing exceptionally well for our constituent
So you're gonna be here?
Yes.
What were you gonna miss?
Uh, I was going to go out and do the largest RC race in the world, and then Nationals.
Yeah.
Which I won one of last year.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
But you're not, no.
But I, I don't see how it makes sense for me to go out and do that. As much as I love the places and the tracks are great out in California, um, that just doesn't seem like the appropriate thing to do in, in the start of March right now.
Is that anywhere where the fires were? I was not gonna say that.
The fires are, uh, were a little bit north of where the largest race would be. And, uh, the other races were the previous major fires were.
Oh, jeez.
So if, um, everybody knows about the, the Paradise Fires in California.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
When I used to go race up there, when I lived up in California, I stayed in Paradise all the time, which was about twenty minutes or so outside of where the track is.
Wow, wow, boy, that's cool.
Because it was a lot nicer place and cheaper.
Really? Well, now it's not there anymore, so
Yeah, I got to go be out in, at the time, uh, all of the natural stuff instead of in a college town.
Oh, yeah. Wow. So you remember I used to live in California.
But anyway, so I'll have similar, I'll have my same similar statement. Like I've done in previous years, I intend to put stuff up on the, the screen so that people can read it, even if they don't have a thing in front of them or can't read it. Make it easy. I haven't decided if I'm gonna do like a presentation that breaks down any of the budget versus just making the statement or not. But in any case, yes, I will make that kind of overall statement, so
Pictures and pictures of
You can pick up pieces of that for your portions, whichever you're gonna talk about. So I will first be budget.
You're gonna do three.
And who wants to second?
No, I can second that. Are we talking number three, right?
Yep.
Dave?
Okay.
Okay, Dee seconds. Well, that only leaves me, I'll do the next one, or you can second the next one.
Well, it can be any number Well, it can be any number of things for the others.
Yeah, so, okay, so, okay, so.
So then it would be for the capital reserve funds and then for the, uh, expendable trust funds. So generally, I would suggest one of you be the prime on each one. You can fight over which ones.
All right, I'll do, but we're just gonna call Rick.
Okay, so you'll be, you'll be that one. So this one is gonna be Marlo.
Okay, then I'll.
And so D will first the.
Do five?
Five.
Okay. All right.
Who's the second on number four?
That's all.
What do you, remind me, what's, what's the second again?
Basically, you have to draw a motion.
To say we want a motion.
You're, you're gonna do the motion saying, then I'll second it or whatever, however we do. Somebody does a motion and somebody says.
Oh, oh, oh.
Does anyone care who does each one?
Because it's technically the select board presenting.
Here, why don't I just make each of you the opposites on that?
That's a great idea.
There's some opposites.
All right, so let's make sure we get these right here, all right? D, and then Marlo seconds.
Okay, uh, contingency fund.
I don't think Dave's had a turn for a couple warrants, so.
Yeah, yeah. Wait a minute, wait a minute, where are you? Capital reserve.
He's on six.
Six, oh, okay. What are we doing? Who's doing this? Dave, you're doing this and.
Shh, that doesn't.
I'll second Dave, and then whoever, me or D second would.
Which one of you wants to do? I, I want Marlo to do the contingency fund. Just because seven is the D. It's the damn bond. She always talks about the bond.
Yeah, all right, so I'll do that. Now, Marlo's doing six, though, right?
Are you gonna second the bond, Dave?
Sure.
Who's seconding six?
Uh, me.
No, you're doing.
No, I'm doing the five. No.
No, you're doing six.
I, I got it done, it's fine.
Okay, good. I'm seconding.
So six is, six, which is the contingency, I'm first, Marlo's second.
Oh, you're first, Dave.
And Bond, you can first, I'll second.
Who's seconding six, I'm sorry?
Me, me, Marlo. M A R L, O, no W.
Who's first, who's firsting six?
Dave.
Dave is doing, and Marlo's second.
Thank you.
And then I'm doing seven, and David's second.
History is petition, mine is petition, so I think that covers that. Um.
Now we need to know.
And then it would be the, if we end up with another one, whether it's either a budget change or a warrant article for the celebration.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm not gonna do that unless we have people that say they wanna do it.
Can't they do it at the floor town meeting to add it?
That's what you like, did something like that.
You could, you could add it to the budget, but we don't have a budget line item for somebody other than the old home committee. So unless the old home committee says, we will champion that and do it, we don't have a way to really fund it outside of warrant article.
We'd also rather have it in a trust fund if it's.
Who the heck's on the old home day committee? It's only like three people, I think.
Terry, um.
Terry Nun, Martin?
Yeah, uh, and her daughter Heidi Olson.
And then is Amanda still on it?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Is Amanda still on it? Cummings?
Cummings?
She used to be.
Oh, I remember.
There's so few, when I was on it, there was like twenty people.
You gotta get people warm, like, oh, anybody wanna help out?
Yeah, right.
You brought it down.
Now, are you going to decide if you are three to zero on these or three to two?
Yep, so that would be our next step on these. For the ones that affect, uh, budget, I think we don't bother to do it with the history or nine, so this would be.
I think last year they made us maybe do the petition once.
Oh, I do, I think so.
No, I think they did it.
I think we did it for one of them because it directly affected funds in town.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
But the others, well, in theory, we could do it for eight, which is the history committee one, but.
Good thing Joe Google's here to tell us what we did last year.
I'm going to say that, uh, so I would move that, actually, it's not a move. We just need to vote, and I'm gonna say that we do two through seven, oh, sorry, three through seven at the same time, which is budget through all of the funds.
Yeah, okay.
So is anybody not in favor of any of these? Speak now, otherwise we'll call them three to zero.
They're fine.
Okay, three to zero by unanimous consent.
Okay, that's good.
Uh, do you, do either of you feel that we should or that you want to vote on number eight, which is to turn the history committee funds over to the Historic Society?
I think we should.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Are you in favor of it or against it?
In favor.
Favor, I'll do this in favor too, yeah.
I think it is, yeah.
Okay, we can say three to zero on that then. All right, I still have some concerns and questions for them, but they're nothing that will block or stop anything.
Did you receive the history book in nineteen, this, this last one that they, they did? I have one at home. There must be one downstairs, though it holds.
I don't know.
Maybe in the library?
Yeah, maybe in the library.
Library would be a good location if you have one.
Yeah.
Well, if not, you need to get it scanned.
What was that?
We might be able to get it scanned.
Might be able to get.
It's scanned.
Scanned, oh. I have one home, so.
That's what I'm saying, if, if it's hard to get.
Okay.
I'm a little upset at them saying that, you know, if they're gonna provide electronic, they're gonna charge for it.
Well, that's not, that's not a given either. We can always discuss that, I would think.
We won't, we can't, because we have nothing to do with the society. We do not govern or control the society.
Can we give them information?
Oh, we can give them information. They can do whatever they want to with it. This is putting it entirely one hundred percent out of the hands of us or the townspeople.
Oh, what we just did?
Yes, i- if it passes, which is the, the, the primary concern there. And if they're going to sell for them, which it sounds like they did in the past, then like they did in the past, if they are doing it beyond recouping costs, then they should put it back in a fund and not just into the standard Historic Society stuff. Or say that next time it will simply come out of normal Historic Society work. They haven't stated any of those, even in a non-binding way, so.
I'm trying, I cannot remember what happened to the last, cause I worked on the last, although my name's not.
They mentioned that they sold them.
Yeah, they sold them, right.
We have access sitting here, which I assume came from when they sold them. I'm assuming.
And you, do you say, do you feel it won't cost anything for them? I don't know. I guess, what would, I guess we didn't find out what they would charge and what, what the fee would be made up of.
So, there's gonna be plenty of time for people doing things, but that's generally volunteer.
Right.
It doesn't cost anything to turn a document into a PDF. It costs a fair amount, especially if you're doing it nicely, to get things printed and passed.
Oh, God, yeah. Oh, God, yeah.
But if we, as the townspeople, are saying we like this and we, like, for example, we want a PDF version that we can keep with the town for the town, like, that shouldn't be a, like, encrypted PDF or, or a, uh, EPUB that may or may not be readable in five years.
You may have caught off guard a little bit about that, though.
Yeah.
I think, I think she's just probably like, oh, my God, I, cause you can't do something for nothing. You know, they, they can volunteer their time, but.
Right.
She, she might not under, cause I didn't know if there was any cost involved, so.
And, and maybe that's some cost that goes out to it because it was done by the publisher instead of by them.
Yeah.
Like, things of that nature, sure, but it's, um, it's more that if we, as the town, especially if it wasn't the society in the first place, and even if it wasn't the town, if it was a separate committee of people that said, we wanna do this as the committee for the next portion, if they're doing that, then the previous committee obviously expected that they were gonna keep trying to make it forward and keep trying to offset costs for the residents instead of just having the residents pay out everything.
Right.
And that, you know, I, I love the society and their work, and I think they'll do a great job. I don't have problems with people paying stuff, but.
Well, it doesn't cost them anything, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I remember, and I don't know whatever happened to them, but we used to have meetings. Like, anybody who wanted to come would come to me, and they'd talk about schools maybe in one meeting, and they took, they took all kinds of notes. They had, and I, I don't know what they ever did with, I don't know who has all those notes, but it would have been really interesting cause we had transportation from the old days and when they were, you know, bringing big tr, like getting trees here and bringing them to the ocean for masks for boats and stuff like that, which is why they call part of Pinnacle, well, Mast Yard, because that's where they got all the big masts. And I, you know, I just.
So, I, I will say that, um, we had a fairly decent public hearing. I was happy that we saw as many people as we did.
Oh, yeah.
And even the, even the, you know, conflicty sort of stuff wasn't very conflicty, so I think it was very successful.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree.
We'll need to still hear back about the, uh, whether somebody wants to do the bicentennial stuff or not. Um, and then we can discuss whether we should add a warrant article or recommend an, an addition to the budget. The, or not, depending on if somebody wants to or isn't going to do it.
We could always add it, and if nobody votes for it, that's done.
Well, I'm not gonna add it if no one has said they're gonna do it.
Oh, all right.
That's true.
The.
Well, you might get people interested if they thought about it.
They thought about what they thought about.
Huh?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's being silly. Think about what you think about, think about what you think about.
The other thing, the other thing would be, um, for, so two, two other things. One, tomorrow night, please consider going to the school department's budget hearing.
Somebody changed the planning board meeting to that.
Don't forget that they, uh, they're over two million dollars overspent in the last year, and they plan to recoup some of that this year in addition to their increases in their budget. Uh, so hopefully they will provide a really good accounting for that.
I can't believe they did that.
And if they provide a really good accounting for it, great, um, but hopefully they will, and then, you know, most people will be satisfied. Uh, but we should definitely know and be aware of exactly where our money is going there, especially being the largest part of our tax base.
Well, especially, I tell you, special ed, special ed pro, is a killer.
Man.
Um, and the second thing is, um, since it's not on our meeting schedule, we might want to consider as a board, even though Dana's gonna write his preference, showing up to the hearing of Hopkinton.
Oh.
To make our point about the bonds as a unified board in person.
Why do they wanna do twenty years, I wonder? I mean, it's, well, right, you, you always.
Probably because the rest of their budget is rather large.
Well, that could, yeah, that's probably.
They do a lot of things on funding and try to just make things pan out over time so that it's not any kind of spikes.
Big, yeah, big, yeah.
Whereas us being, having no debts, we don't have any of those spikes. And so just being the most fiscally responsive and responsible makes it the most sense for us.
And Webster's always been like that, so, yeah, really.
So, um, but it would be wonderful if that could be a separate discussion for Webster and Hopkinton because Neil could hopefully confirm with D E S that, yeah, we can do part of it as a ten and part of it as a twenty year. That, to me, would be the most idea, cause then we just say what we wanna do and we don't care what they wanna do.
Exactly.
And to me, that's the most, the, the best option.
And it saves us money, so, you know, long ones, so that's the important part.
Doesn't drag us out.
Yeah, right.
Yep, doesn't drag us out, saves us money, and with the percentages, it's basically free money because we're not gonna go above that and. And, uh, inflation. So those are the important dates. If you can consider making them, that would be good. I'm sure Dana will let us know if Neil gets back to them.
Next, next Monday, yeah.
Um, do you know what time? I think they meet earlier. I'm sure we can look at their website, but.
Bosco, uh, Hopkinton?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know if I'm ready.
Yeah, I think we'll do that, yeah.
The budget hearing for the school is at six tomorrow.
Oh, it said six? Well, that's pretty early.
Six in the high school auditorium.
Right. Should know that by heart. I meant the thirty years of those.
Uh, let's see.
We came a long way, though, I have to say. I still feel good. We, the school district, when I was on it, we did a, um.
Six PM next Monday.
Okay.
We did a, we did a woodchip plant that burns woodchips to heat the high school and the middle school and the SAU. I just talked to the guy that's in charge of that. Saved us, in twenty years, we saved over a million dollars in heat. I feel so good about, cause I, I wanna do, I wanna see if the monitor will do another story, cause it's time that they got a little publicity for that.
Absolutely.
But that's a million dollars. That's pretty doggone good.
They have three bonds they're talking about that night.
Well, that would be why.
Oh, Hopkinton?
Hmm, but maybe that one's first.
What the heck are they doing for bonds?
They need seven hundred twelve thousand for wastewater treatment.
Oh, that's terrific.
And a hundred twenty for wastewater infrastructure condition assessment.
Oh, my God.
You know, they never got back to us about exactly how much was, uh, coming out of the mitigation portion for them putting the sledge into it from their se, uh.
The sewer, yeah, no, they haven't.
We still need that money, cause out of the four million, that should offset it, so we shouldn't even be looking at that much.
They must have just, just automatically forgot that, they owe us money.
Yeah, right.
Just happen to pass by their heads.
So, yeah.
Maybe Dana should remind them.
Well, we'll see where that goes.
Yeah. Jeez.
Okay, anything else? Are we, are we done?
Um, I have nothing else for you.
He's done. I'm done.
All right, I'm, I'm moved, we, uh, end this meeting at nine eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Can I have a ride home, David, please?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Only if you behave, Dee.
Oh, yeah.